Yes ma'am. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Present.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Present.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Present.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Present.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Present.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask for the adoption of the agenda. Are there any calls to modify it?
I do. I have two amendments to the agenda. I would propose first that we move the CTE proclamation, CTE month proclamation, from Thursday evening to today so that we can consider that before the end of CTE month, given that we may have inclement weather later this week. And then I would also request a discussion of the letter to the Attorney General that I sent to the Board last evening.
Is that a motion?
It is, yes.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary, can you do a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
No.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
No.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So we'll modify the agenda that way. Lauren, Ms. Kitzinger, can you please review the safety procedures?
Excuse me. In the event of a fire emergency, we will split the room in half. The right side of the room will exit out the door to my left, and the left side of the room will exit out the door to my right. Those moving to my right will go out into the parking lot towards the bagel shop, and those moving to my left will go out to the digital sign near Glynn-Burney Road. From the fire department comes and clears the building.
Ms. Gatchell, can you do the invocation?
Board members, if you'll please pray with me. Heavenly Father, blessed are those who fear you, O Lord, and walk in your ways. We pray your blessing on this day, but it is too often not you we fear, but the multitude of challenges that confront us. Whether our anxiety is for things political or personal, changes environmental or emotional, upheaval, suppositional or spiritual, we too often find the uncertainty of our days has eclipsed our ability to acknowledge or appreciate your power and authority over every aspect of our lives. Teach us then to walk in your ways, to affirm your majesty over every aspect of our lives. Would that we allow within our own spirits your holiness to transform the hostility, your kindness every cruelty, your love every malevolence. Blessed are those who fear the Lord. May this day and all the days of our lives receive your blessing, and the work of our hands may prosper. In your merciful name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Lori Spees, can you please do the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to take the opportunity to introduce the parent and student representatives attending this work session this month. Ms. Kimberly Mallard is a parent of Tucker Creek Middle School. We welcome you, and we hope you participate. Just jump right in. And then we'd like to congratulate the students and welcome them. Jacob Kennedy and Angelina Sanchez Yuli from Havelock High, and you're joining the work session as the super student representatives, and we appreciate it, and we hope you participate. Do not hesitate. Okay? Thank you. I would like to recognize the Principal of the Year, Carolyn Godwin. We appreciate all the work you do. You do a lot of hard work, and congratulations. And we'd also like to recognize the Teacher of the Year, Johannika Simmons, who will be recognized as advisors, and both of you are advisors for this work session, and we appreciate it. Janika, I'm sorry. The first order of business is we're gonna have the election of a chairman. Sadly, our chairman has resigned from the Board, and I'll read his letter of resignation first. The subject is resignation from Craven County Board of Education. Dear Members of the Board and all of Craven staff, effective Monday, February 10th, I formally submit my resignation as a member of the Craven County Board of Education. After much prayer, reflection and counsel, I have come to the realization that it is time for me to step away and refocus on the priorities God has set before me, my faith, my family and my ministry. Serving on this Board has been both an honor and a challenge. When I stepped into this role, I did so with a heart for our students, educators and the future of our community. However, the nature of this environment within the Board has turned what should be a part-time service into an all-consuming battle. The relentless time it takes to be on this Board has drained energy and time that rightly belongs to my family and ministry. As the Word of God teaches, we must be wise stewards and discern when and where to share the valuable parts of ourselves, including our faith, wisdom, energy and time. My calling to serve the community is greater than this position, and it has become abundantly clear that my service is needed elsewhere. Those closest to me will have firmed the differences between the role for which I was elected versus the role in this environment, which takes too great a toll on my family and ministry. I cannot allow that to continue. I leave this position confident in God's calling for my life. I trust that He is leading me toward greater things, and I will step forward with peace, knowing that my decision is best for me and my family. My hope is that in this Board we'll find a way to work together in truth and integrity. For the sake of our students, we were elected to serve. Thank you for those who have supported me all along the way. I will continue to pray for our schools, our students and strong leadership that truly prioritizes what is best for the community. Sincerely, Scott Murphy, Board Chair, Craven Board of Education. So I will open the floor for nominations.
Madam Chair, I nominate Lori Spees.
As I said, I will open the floor for nominations. People can submit as many nominations as they want. Madam Secretary, if you will take the names in the order they're nominated, and then we will vote on them, a roll call vote, in the order that they were nominated. Any other nominations?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Patty Mason as Chair.
Any other nominations? Okay, Madam Secretary, if you can do the roll call vote.
And this is for the nomination of Chair Lori Spees. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
No.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
No.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum? I mean, you have a... You have a new chair.
Lori, the face is vacant for him.
Madam Chair, you need a break?
Thank you, and I would like to call for a brief break. Ten minutes? I don't know, ten minutes?
Ten minutes. Hit your gavel.
Districts in which every one of their schools is designated as military friendly, based on the application process with multiple things they have to prove that they're doing for their families. I'm happy to report that Craven County Schools will again this year, for the fourth year in a row, receive the Purple Star Award for every school in our district and as a district. So I want to thank our military counselors, our military liaisons, and our school leaders who submitted those applications. We will be participating in a state award ceremony on May 9th to receive that award. Next, each year, teachers in certain grade levels are eligible for a bonus from DPI. The bonuses are based on legislation and based on EVA's growth scores for students. Eligible teachers are teachers of reading in third, fourth, and fifth grade and grade four through eight in math. There are also bonuses for CTE teachers and teachers that teach AP courses. So I just wanted the board to be aware, as well as the public, and celebrate our teachers. And I'm happy to report that 50 teachers in Craven County Schools earned a bonus for scoring in the top 25% in our district. Fifty-one teachers in Craven County Schools earned a bonus for having scores that were in the top 25% in the state of North Carolina. So 51 teachers, that's something really to be celebrated. Sixteen teachers earned a bonus for their CTE credentials and 12 teachers earned a bonus for their AP courses, students, based on student scores. The bonuses ranged from $25 to $1,900, so a wide range there. But again, another opportunity to celebrate the great work happening in our classrooms. I'm certainly happy about the top 25% in the district, but when you compare statewide to have 51 of our teachers in the top 25%, says great things are happening in our classrooms. But I do need to say this, and I say this every year. I just want to shout out our other teachers. Legislation does not provide bonuses, for example, for our K-2 teachers. So if any of those folks are listening, I want them to hear me say thank you to them because we all realize they provide the foundation for these students when they come into third grade to be reading so that the teachers in third grade can continue the momentum. So for the record, I want to say all of our teachers need to be paid what they deserve to be paid, and I know many of you are working on that at the state level. Certainly, we appreciate the county commissioners and the 10 and 1/2% local supplement we receive. We are looking at revamping that to do tiers, so no one will make less, but actually some will make more to continue to recruit the very best for Craven County Schools. Craven Summit, a couple of you attended Craven Summit, and I know you're aware that last week we hosted a two-day professional development conference for our staff. It was a way to provide PD for our employees by our employees. We had over 100 sessions that were offered, had some out-of-town guests, but I also want to report there was no fee charged by anyone that presented at the conference. So we had all of our teachers, some of our TAs, probably upwards of 900 people that participated in this, and it was no cost. We had prizes donated, so it was a great day. I just want to say thank you to Michelle Lee and the CNI team who put together this conference and also for all the presenters that presented sessions. So again, a great opportunity for our folks to learn and lead in the same day, so it was a great event. Next, February is CTE Month, and I heard Ms. Dacey earlier ask, due to the weather, that we go ahead and look at that proclamation, but I want to honor our CTE program and our teachers. They've already done lots of things. The whole month, we celebrate CTE and the great things happening. Again, Holly does a great job of getting the word out there, but there are still folks that ask me, why don't we have welding? Or why don't we have? We have all those things. They may just be called by a different name. So I would encourage anyone that would like to see what's happening in our CTE classes, that Ms. Tolston is providing walkthroughs at all of our traditional high schools. I think New Bern was last week, and I know at least one board member went on that tour. So great things are happening in our CTE program. In addition to touring schools, there was a CTE Expo held on February 4th at the Convention Center, and that was a collaboration between Craven County Schools CTE, Craven County Economic Development, Craven Community College, as well as Business and Industry, to show our students that there are opportunities right here in Craven County that they can be trained for and come back and live and work in this area. So that was a great event as well. Last week was Love the Bus Week. It was a time to shine the spotlight on our bus drivers. School bus drivers across North Carolina enjoyed well-deserved attention during School Bus Driver Appreciation Week. Individual schools, and you may have seen this on Facebook, did lots of celebrations for our folks. I want to remind everyone, without our bus drivers, some of our students would have no way to get to and from school, so it's so important that we continue to recruit great folks as our bus drivers. They are the first and the last smiling face many of our students see each and every day. So it is aimed to raise awareness and appreciation for the safe experience of riding a bus to and from school each day. In North Carolina, more than 750,000 students board over 13,000 school buses every day. Their drivers must complete rigorous training and be certified to drive a bus. I want to take a moment to say thank you to our bus drivers and the entire Transportation Department to ensure our students arrive at school and at home in a safe and efficient manner. Just for a little bit of data, in Craven County Schools, we operate 155 yellow buses each day, transport 7,000 students each day, and every year, our bus drivers drive over 1 million miles. So that kind of puts it in perspective. Craven County is certainly a long county, so every day you'll see buses as it's getting light and as it's getting dark, they're out on the road. So a special thank you to our bus drivers and our transportation for ensuring the safety of our students. Each year, Operation Home Front sponsors Military Child of the Year Awards. The Military Child of the Year reflects the positive impact that these impressive young people have on military families, their schools, and their communities. Recently, semifinalists were named, and I'm excited to report, and I'm going to try not to mess up her last name, I called Ms. Casey this morning, so Havlock folks correct me if I don't say her name right, Emily Basen Singh. Say that again? Baldio Singh. So Emily will be a finalist representing Havlock High School and Craven County Schools and the National Guard Branch, and she has been named as one of the semifinalists. Operation Home Front Military Child of the Year Awards recipients, so once they are selected recipients, they will be flown with a parent or guardian to Washington DC, recognized in a gala in April, during which senior leaders of each of the branches will be there to present the awards, and they also will receive $10,000 and a laptop computer and other donated gifts. So best of luck to Emily as she moves forward in this process. So again, I want to talk a little bit about reassignment. The reassignment window is open. All requests are electronic. We're trying to get that word out because we're still kind of getting some paper requests. They are all electronic. The purpose of that is so that it's easier to get to us and we're easier to respond about the decision. The children of staff members are again, unless the board changes their policy, are automatically approved if they're a current staff member in our district. Last year, we reported that 50% were approved, and I want to clarify that that included staff children. So there were, I think I've got it here somewhere, how many? 767 reassignment requests, and that included staff and everyone that requested reassignment. I want to remind the board, because you may be hearing, last year, there were hold harmless grade levels, like if they were in fifth grade, eighth grade. There is no held harmless this year, so those students that were only approved because of their grade level, which also contributed to the 50%, this year no longer will be eligible for hold harmless, so they will be sent to their base school unless they meet one of the areas in policy. Today, the board will discuss out-of-county tuition, and there are some considerations for the board regarding the policy that states there's no tuition, it's waived in the first 20 days, and I'll discuss that more with the board when the policy comes up. But because this year, they're using this year's ADM for next year, if a student enrolls next year, we will not get the financial support, which is why we said in the first 20 days that we would waive tuition because they would be counted in our ADM. Next year, they will not, so that's something for the board to consider if you want to change that policy and charge tuition for those students that are new to our district. One of the things you could do is if they attended this year, they're in the ADM, so we would get the money, so you could waive tuition for those folks, but any new folks, we would not get. They would, the money's going to go if they're third grade or wherever they were in second grade, that's where the money's going to go. So something for the board to consider, because last year, it was the current 20 days, so we got financial resources. Something to think about as you discuss that policy. Next, the North Carolina High School Risk Survey. The board had a lot of conversation about this last year, and I believe the year before. Each year, DPI sends out a survey, and they choose select high schools to participate. New Bern High School was selected. The survey, and I've put a copy of the survey at each of your tables. I know there's some concern about the questions that are asked, and this is an opt-out survey. In other words, parents, on many of our surveys, they have to opt-in and say they want to participate. This is given to students unless the parents opt out, and I know there's sometimes concern for that. So I would like some direction from the board regarding the survey, if you would like New Bern High School students to participate. Ms. Kitzinger, did you have something?
My issue with this survey every year is the verbiage that it uses. You know, I don't feel, and I'm just going to...
Read a question.
I'm just going to go right here, what's in front of me. I mean, there's several pages and topics that it touches. But for instance, right here, it says the next five questions ask about sad feelings and attempted suicide. Sometimes people feel so depressed about the future that they may consider attempting suicide, that is, taking some action to end their own life. And then it has five que, well, it said five questions, sorry. But it says, during the past 12 months, did you ever feel so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that you stopped doing some usual activities? Okay, that's typical, right? During the past 12 months, did you ever seriously consider attempting suicide? And then it asks if you made a plan, and then it asks, how many times did you actually attempt suicide? And then it says, if you attempted suicide during the past 12 months, did any attempt result in an injury, poisoning, or overdose that had to be treated by a doctor or nurse? And there are topics about sex, sexuality, drugs, and I understand addressing these issues with our children, I absolutely do, and I'm not going to say more than anyone, but more than a lot. And I am of the opinion that a lot of these things are not in a lot of our students' minds. And I feel as if putting these thoughts into some of our children's heads is dangerous, and I just don't agree with it. I feel as though we should be paying attention to them every day and having these conversations with them every day, their families, in school, friends, teachers, educators, principals. I feel as though we should be looking out for the signs and not just handing this to the masses.
And it is anonymous, so like we wouldn't be able to use the data to help a kid, right?
So what's the point?
There's several about weapons in there, and if a student, and like some high school students may not take it very seriously, and it would lead folks to believe that there are weapons in our schools and, you know, and we never say never, but my concern with the survey, and that's why I wanted to get board input, because I will do as the board directs, but it would lead, and they identify their school, it would lead to believe some of our schools are not safe just because someone put that, whether it's factual or not. And I believe we have great counselors, we have great SROs, great school leaders, as Ms. Kitzinger said, that have a pulse on their students and are watching out for those things without asking a survey. But again, it is a board decision whether we give the survey, so.
Ms. Mason, did you have some comments?
I make a motion that we opt out of the survey.
Ms. Dacey, did you have?
I will second that. I will also say that I agree with Ms. Kitzinger's concerns. I want to put that on the record. I also want the public to understand that we spend a lot of time at the school level, and Ms. Matt can speak to this in more detail, our Director of Health Services, as well as Dr. Monroe, we spend a lot of time, counselors do, responding to issues that our kids, real-life everyday issues that our kids have, and our folks are trained to deal with those issues, to do threat assessments when needed, to get help for our kids when that's appropriate. And I share the concern that actually asking about things sometimes has the power of suggestion in a way that is negative, and that is my concern with the survey as well, so.
Michelle Lee? Yes, Ms. Lee?
I just want to let everybody know that data is not counted, we would not, Craven County, they don't pay much, they
I'm not for romanticizing any of this for our students, then I would rather us pay attention to them face-to-face.
For sure. I concur with those sentiments, for sure. And I believe, Dr. Miller, you said it comes from DPI? Is that right? Or is it, who?
It goes through the...
Who produces this survey and gets these results? DPI? I don't know about the rest of the board, but I really want DPI to get back to the business of educating our kids and not giving them ideas about these things. I have a motion to, for Craven County Schools, from Ms. Mason, to opt out of Craven County Schools participating in the survey. I have a second from Ms. Daisy, and could you please take a roll call vote, Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jennifer Dacey? And this is to opt out.
Out, yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spee?
Yes.
That one was an easy one, thank you. And the final thing that I will mention, because I know everyone is waiting for the word on this, is the weather. While it's still unpredictable, they are saying the weather's coming in around noon tomorrow, so our buses would be on the road just as it's getting bad. So Ms. Wagner, I said I wanted to notify the board first, but we'll be announcing that tomorrow is a remote day for our students. This gives me an opportunity to explain a remote day as opposed to other options. So our students are counted for instructional hours, and we have enough hours that tomorrow would not have to be a day for our students, but our staff has to work, 200 teachers, 215 days. So if we called tomorrow off, either we would make it an optional day, and folks that don't have leave would not get paid, or we add it to the end of the calendar. I would say our teachers work weekends, nights, and a lot of times already. They will be grading papers tomorrow, I hope, catching up on some stuff, and they are there for students. It's asynchronous, so students should not be having to log in at a certain time, they should have assignments, and just, so they turn their assignments in within five days, they're getting credit for those assignments. So there's lots of confusion about a work day, an optional day, a mandatory day, so our staff works really hard, I don't want to add any days, they already work more than the 215 on nights and weekends, so that is the reason for a remote day. And also, students have times to catch up on some work maybe that would help them out, and they're shaking their head yes, so there's plenty for folks to do tomorrow. I don't know about the rest of the week, because one channel you listen to, it says snow, and how many inches, and the next one says ice. Certainly, I don't want our buses on the road, our staff on the road, or our student drivers on the road. So tomorrow's going to be announced shortly as a remote day. Any questions about that?
Ms. Dacey?
I'll turn myself off. I just have one as a follow-up. So I know there was some discussion and there were questions from the public the last time we had snow days, and I think that was because some neighboring counties did some different things that I think when it was explained to me, honestly, did not make sense. So I think you've explained it well. We don't worry about what other people do, but is there anything else you want to add?
Well, I think there's a question like, could we make it a remote day for staff? Well, many of our staff are not able to do some of their work remotely.
Custodians cannot work remotely.
Right, so it punishes, and I hope Ms. Mason doesn't mind that I say this, but like she had someone reach out to her about the custodians, do they get paid, do they not get paid? Our classified folks have to work, but what we tell them is, discuss with your supervisor because they may make up their hours the next day, they may, so there is no remote work day because not all of our, it's unfair to some of our folks, and unfortunately, some of our folks that are paid the lowest wage. So I want to be fair, and those folks that can work, work with students, and the other folks have the opportunity to make up the time, so. We don't, since COVID, we don't work from home because that opens up a whole new thing. We have a remote day, that's in the calendar law, and it's in our remote plan. There is no remote work day or any of that in our plan. So I want to stick to what we submit so that we keep the board and the district safe. It was approved as we sent it, so I'm going to stick to that.
Okay, I thank you for that. I think I also want to make it clear, it's so difficult for us to recruit for those positions like custodians. I know Mr. Lee's well aware of the ongoing issues they have with that, and so when we have people in those positions, we want to keep them there, and we want to be flexible with them and obviously follow the law, so.
And there is documentation, like teacher assistants. Certainly, there's things they can do and help teachers with. They document their time, so if we were ever audited, we have the time sheets for those folks. So the principal school leaders, bookkeepers do a great job of keeping that documentation, so I want Craven to be a place people want to come, so that's one of the ways that we help our folks is not making days optional when they're really not optional for beginning teachers, because they don't have the days, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything else unless there's questions.
Does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Miller? Yes?
So you said that tomorrow is our remote day, and they don't get counted absent because there's no certain time that they have to log in.
Michelle's like, I want to get this one.
I just have a question.
Okay.
The last remote day, was it the same way?
So apparently, yes, ma'am, it was supposed to be the same way, but apparently the information was not completely given out correctly consistently. So yesterday, I sent an email to every principal to send to their teachers. These asynchronous days are remote learning days. Students do not have to log in at a certain time or by a certain time to get and turn their work in. I had a fella, a gentleman, call me and say that he thought it was a remote, it was a remote day, so he let his kids sleep in and miss first period, and then she got counted not present. That is not the way we do it. So I sent it out yesterday, again, saying that kids do not have to go online, and they cannot be marked. Everyone in the district is marked with a code 1R, meaning remote and present. They have five days to turn their work in after we return from inclement weather. Those five days, no matter if they turn them in or not, you cannot retroactively go back and say the kids are absent. If they don't do the work that they're supposed to turn in, they get a zero on the work. You don't also cause them problems with the absenteeism. So one of the things our data managers have been instructed to do tomorrow during their remote day is to go through everybody and make sure the last remote work days, those children were marked present. They should have been marked present, and we will rectify if they were not.
Thank you, because unfortunately, I have two children that did not get up on time, and they were marked absent.
Well, that's good to know, so that'll be corrected. And while you brought up absences, I want to address that, because I hear a lot of buzz sometimes about that. Now, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association is very strict on their absence policy, and it's excused or unexcused. But in Craven County Schools, if you're sick, we do not tell, and I hope Luanne's shaking her head, we don't tell sick kids to come to school. If you are sick, we're not going to take you to court if your child has surgery. We're talking about excessive absences, like 10% of the instructional days they miss. And it's pretty much historical data that these same students or families that we're struggling to get in school. If someone has surgery, has appendicitis, and is put in the hospital, like we're not going to take a family to court. It's unexcused absences that folks are held accountable for. So I want to say that for both the board and the public, but now the Athletic Association is very strict, you have to be in attendance 85% of days, so that is for participation in athletics. It's not, we take you to court, we do other sanctions for families or students. We understand when kids are sick, right now more than ever, because flu is running rampant in our schools, sick kids need to stay home, and we will work with you to make up work and ensure that families are not punished for having sick kids and doing the right thing and keeping them home. So I wanted to say that to the board and to the public. That's all I have.
I have a question, Dr. Miller. Do you have any updates, just high-level overview of anything related to the budget schedule?
So we have been working on the budget. Every week, Cabinet has met with Business and Finance. We have, I've had a conversation with Mr. White regarding the budget. They want a number in March, so we'll be prepared to do that. Not unlike other districts all around the state, with ESER funding gone, you know, we're going to have to trim back. I don't want to say like folks are going to lose their jobs, because certainly we have vacancies, but we are looking, and I want to say this publicly to, first, we're trying to stay as far away from the classroom setting as possible. So first will be central office, are there jobs we can merge if folks retire, are there ways to do that? Also, looking at, and the board knows that we look at contract services, are those that we can trim back? Looking at every avenue we can. Certainly, I am expecting to request more of the commissioners, just for the cost of living alone, we will need to request more. I'm not sure what that number will be yet, but we're going to, I'm looking to recommend to the board for the budget three things. Carve back the district, ask for a little bit more from the county commissioners, and use a little bit more fund balance, but we have been trimming back fund balance per the commissioner's request. I just don't want us to trim back so far that if money doesn't drop from the state or federal government, pending, we still get money from the federal government, it doesn't drop till December, fund balance is used to cover salaries until then. So we can't spend to zero in our fund balance, or folks won't get paid, and that does not make for happy employees. So we will be bringing more up and talking with the board about some directions and options, because it is the superintendent's budget until the board adopts it, so I will be taking input from the board regarding how you want to see these numbers flush out, and then we will proceed, and I will be prepared to share with the commissioners an estimate of our request in March, and then the budget will actually be presented to the board and then to the commissioners by the May deadline per general statute. Is that enough update? Okay, thank you.
Now, we're going to move into the Successful Students portion of our agenda, and the first item is that I'll call Ms. Michelle Lee back to talk to us about amendments to the 2025, 2026, and 2027 traditional and early college calendars, and this is an item that will require a board vote.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Dr. Battle is here, she's going to go into detail, but I just want to remind the public that we have already adopted a two-year calendar. The question that was remaining is what day was the best day to do graduation? Dr. Battle and Dr. Sellers have got some information, and she's going to share what that information was, and what the final decision has been made, so that you can vote.
Good morning. If we could please go to, oh, perfect, it's already up on the screen, the 2526 Early College Calendar, we'll start with that one first. So we're going to propose on this calendar to have graduation on Thursday, May 14th for our early colleges. This change will ensure alignment with the scheduled graduation ceremonies at Craven Community College. They will have their graduation a couple days later on that Saturday. We do this so that families who are coming in to watch their children graduate are able to do so and see both graduations at the same time. So that does not make a change to the calendar by any stretch, it just adds the graduation date to Thursday, May 14th. Would you like me to go ahead and go to traditional before we?
Sure.
Perfect. So if we could pull up the traditional calendar for 2526, and we are only talking about 2526 at this time, even though we have a two-year calendar, there are still some things we are waiting on for 2627, for example, Craven Community College announcing graduation. So we're only talking about next school year. So for traditional, you'll recall, if we scroll down to the bottom, if you wouldn't mind, looking at May, originally, the last day of school on the original proposal was on the 22nd, Friday, the 22nd. We met with our traditional high school principals, they also gained feedback from multiple stakeholders in their building, and they indicated that they would like to have graduation the next day. So to do that, and then graduation would occur on a Friday, so to do that, we would have Thursday, May 21st, 2026, be the last day of school for students, with Friday, May 22nd, being the first designated teacher work day and would be required. And so that would allow for graduation to be the very next day at our three traditional high schools. And so that would allow for graduation to be the very next day at our three traditional high schools. These adjustments reflect ongoing collaboration with our schools and community partners to ensure that all the key events, including graduation, are well coordinated and are going to meet the needs of our students and families.
Are there questions about the modifications to the calendars? Okay, any? Yes, Ms. Kitzinger.
So I looked over what was presented last month and then this month and literally nothing that I noticed was different. So how, and I know, I trust you that we're meeting all of the requirements, but how are we losing a day of instruction every, all the hours and the days are?
So the hours will decrease ever so slightly for traditional because they will end on a half.
It's just a half day though.
It's just, well, it was a half day on that Friday, the 22nd. So they'll lose one day of instruction, which would be about 6.8 hours. But we were well over our hour requirement, but it still meets the 215-day requirement for our teachers. So essentially the students will lose one day or about 6.8 hours of instruction.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything.
You are not, you are not.
Okay, looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any? I just want to say that I know we can't help that the community college is having, has moved their ceremonies up. I just want to remind the board and the public that a lot of times, according to the purpose of early college, those students are often first-generation college graduates. And so it will be a big deal for, for them. So in the event that their families cannot be here for two weekends or stay for the week, I want us, as we do get into the next year, to consider doing something during their high school graduation weekend that also maybe especially honors them outside of the ceremony with hundreds of other kids. So it, it's a big deal. So if there's no other questions or discussion, yes?
I would move that we adopt the amendments to the calendars as proposed.
Do we have a second to adopt the amended calendar?
I have a second.
Okay. We have a first from Mistress Daisy and a second from Mistress Gibbs. And would you please take a roll call vote, Dr. Miller?
Be happy to. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spee?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is to get an update on our exceptional children services. And I believe Ms. Lee is going to lead that.
I am. Ms. Gover has the flu and so I am going to do my best to review this with you. I wanted to remind the board and the public that this presentation was a request from Ms. Kitzinger and the board agenda setting time that she wanted to know was the decentralization of the EC programs and hubs around the county? Did it create excessive abs, excessive vacancies by split, splitting the children back out and sending them to their home schools? Did I get that right? I did. That was all that was communicated to me. I'm sorry, well then what, 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 tell me the correct and maybe I can squeeze it in? Perhaps?
Well, I wanted to know, was the decentralization of it a benefit?
Sure.
To our students?
That's what I wanted to know.
And I also, I also wanted to know, since Ms. Gover took over, what all has she done? What changes has she made?
Sure.
But we can get that at a later date.
So I will tell you that Ms. Gover came in with a 90-day plan that was unbelievable. She really had a great vision and we have worked really hard towards filling that. The decision to provide students with disabilities in their home schools were based on three things. Next slide. Increased demand. So we had, we have a record-high child count of over 1,900 EC students at the beginning of last year. We're up over 2,300 as of today. And these children were all housed at certain locations. For example, in New Bern, they were housed at Ben Quinn. In Havelock area, they were housed at Havelock Elementary School. So those were the two areas that the Western Party part of this county really is not affected by this because there's so much travel time. Those schools had to keep their exceptional children there. So the actual number of students that we're having now, like I said, is about 2,300. So when a school absorbs students, they, not only do they absorb the body of the student, they absorb their integrated scores, which affects principal salaries, teacher salaries. It, they, they get their absenteeism, they hit, they get their emotional stresses, disabilities of, and that's with any student, no matter where they go, outside of their home building. So other schools take that ownership of them. So with reassignment happening last year, the district requirement for students to attend designated schools coincided with the need to expand our EC resources. We needed more classrooms. Our classrooms at Ben Quinn were over capacity. And for example, there was, I think, eight kids in one class there. Two of them were actually Ben Quinn students. The other five were from the JT Barber community. So those classes were over capacity and had a vacancy. So we weren't bringing them there for a certified teacher because that's where the certified teacher was. It was a vacancy as well. So this just was a perfect time for us to go ahead and decentralize. The approach aligns with the plan to provide additional support as students assign schools, accommodating those growing EC populations. Next slide. I think one of the things we also have to remember is that it is hard on families. It's hard enough on families when they have kids in multiple schools. But if they're in their feeder pattern, there's not a lot we can do. Parents of children who have disabilities, however, were being required to have their kids in a different school from their siblings. So if they had plays or they had parties or they wanted to go have lunch with their children, they couldn't go to just the one school if they had kids in two, because they may have kids in two different elementary schools because their EC child was being bussed to a centralized location. So the strategic direction of EC services is to provide a flexible, student-centered approach, demonstrating these principles. One of the things that Ms. Gover really talked about is EC is not a program, it's a service. And we have to get out of the habit of talking about it's an exceptional children's program. It's not a program. It's the way we serve these children so they get the same opportunities as students with or without disabilities. Services have to be student-focused, not location-dependent. That was one of our real problems was kids, there, there wasn't a classroom for that child at that school. And by law, you have to do it. And we did it for many years by having these hubs. Individualized support tailored to specific student needs. Adaptable strategies that can be implemented at the school level. Minimize and disruptive student transitions by providing continuous, consistent educational support. So if we look, and, and those are the things that we believe our students need to get out of public education. Then in 2024, the shift to serve students with their community peers had very little impact on the number of vacancies. And that's why, that was the question that I was giving Ms. Kitzinger at the agenda meeting. Because the question was, when you decentralized all these students and send them back to their home schools, there were no teachers there. You had to have all of these additional EC teaching positions created. And that is not so because when the children were in a school and they were decentralized, the teacher went with the children to whatever school, but it could have already had a vacancy there. I, I need to say that careful, I, I need to make sure everybody understands that. The classrooms already had vacancies in a lot of places. But in the New Bern area, we did have to create two additional positions. Now that doesn't mean those are the two positions that were vacant, but we had to create two position, two additional positions in order to put everybody in their feeder, in their home schools. In Havelock, we had to also create two additional positions. So we created four additional positions for all of the EC students in order to let them go back to their home school and hopefully go to school with their peers, their people they live in the community with, their brothers and sisters. And so there, and as I said, there was no changes in the Western school because there was no, there wasn't a need for it. And this area back there, they have to continue serving all of their children. I, I did have someone say, where were these positions at? And so that was really difficult because, for example, Ben Quinn had fi, I think, five total EC classrooms. So we moved one here, one there. So it was difficult to tell you where the school was that the vacancy actually was created for because we were, we were relocating students and staff. But as best as I can see, JT Barber and Trent Park only had one EC class last year. This year they have two EC classes. So those would be the two positions that were two teaching positions that were added. It doesn't mean that a teacher from Ben Quinn wasn't transferred over there to cover that class, but those were the two additional classrooms that we had to create. And in Havelock, it was Graham Barden and Roger Bell. So for example, Roger Bell had a classroom for self-contained students, but they did not have a classroom for adaptive children. And they now needed an adaptive classroom because they had children that were supposed to go to school at Roger Bell and we didn't have a classroom to accommodate them at that particular place. Next slide. So historical service delivery impacts, I'm sorry, one more. I talked about that one and didn't tell you. IEPs aim to close educational gaps with services adjusted as progress is made. Previously, when home schools lacked necessary services, mid-year transitions were often disruptive. By equipping all students to meet diverse student needs, IEP decisions can now be implemented promptly and consistently benefiting student progress. So if you had a child who was in a self-contained classroom and they were tested and they, it was deemed by the IEP team that they now needed a more intensive environment, they would have to be transitioned out of that school to another school because that school could not accommodate. So that's one of the ways this impacted kids and how we have overcome some of that. Students with disabilities previously placed outside of their home schools missed opportunities to attend school with their siblings and local peers. I mentioned that earlier. This arrangement frustrated new families expecting all their children to attend the same school. The new approach aligns with families' expectations when choosing homes based on school districts. We heard a lot of that when we were talking about redistricting. Parents said, I bought my house here because this is where I wanted my kid to go to school. Well, just because you have an EC child, you would still expect, expect them to be able to go to school in the community that they live in. Students needed specialized transportation due, due to being assigned to schools outside of their district, resulting in significantly longer bus times. So kids were being bussed and it's our most disadvantaged children, right? Our children with the most need were on the bus the longest because they were being bussed to a hub instead of being able to go to their home school that was down the road perhaps. Increasing number of teaching positions regardless of location was necessary to keep low, our, next slide, I'm sorry. Our caseloads within DPI guidelines and avoid, avoid class size waivers. Stay competitive in teacher recruitment and retention by maintaining smaller class size. The class size is, what the state says is really, like in middle school, I think it's one, one teacher to 45 students or 50, 45 or 50. And that, and that's a huge, that's a huge reason people don't want to be in the EC program because they have to do all the paperwork and the meetings for that many students. So a retention of the smaller class size or caseload on a teacher certainly is preferred by the teacher. And if you've ever worked in EC, you know that meetings consume their, the teacher's times. They leave, a lot of teachers leave because they have these unlimited number of kids on their caseload and the growing paperwork because you all know that we get more Ts to cross and Is to dot and paperwork with every year that comes with servicing students. Focus recruitment on individual schools to enhance teacher fit, foster ownership, and highlight unique school culture, improving teacher attraction and retention, and avoid, avoid creating hubs or larger caseloads which could drive teachers to neighboring districts with better, thank you, conditions. I'm getting over all of this same mess, but I want to, I want to kind of tell you what's coming down the pike. So DPI is having conversations about creating a single EC license. That is one of our struggles is that right now you have to be licensed in a certain EC category to be able to teach those students. It's not just, it's not just that EC generalist. It's EC learning disabled, EC autism. It, it all is separate. They are trying to consolidate that so that any, any teacher who has had the training to support disabled students in any manner can teach in any of these classrooms, which will be very helpful. And then new allocations model based on student services and not by the number of students. We hear all the time. I have a student in my class that takes up, is in my room four hours a day. You have a kid in your EC classroom, he comes in three times a week for 15 minutes. We get the same amount of funding for both of those children. And, and we know that we need the state to start looking at funding based on the service and not per pupil in the EC classroom, in the EC arena. So we're waiting for that, we're hoping for that, but we're not going to count our chickens on that because we know that that may take time or it may not happen. So internally, we have calculated the minutes for every student. And next school year, we have already met with principals and they're excited that we're going to be able to service and provide staffing for our students according to service time and not per person. And that will, we, we believe that we'll be able to have less positions in the EC department by doing that. So I'm, I hope I answered some of the questions, maybe not all. But I do think that the impact on decentralization has helped families and in turn helps kids when they can go to school with people that they know.
Do you have any comments? Ms. Dacey?
So thank you. I know, I know this isn't your area, but, and I'll let Ms. Kitzinger speak to this a little bit since it was her request. But one of, I think our frustrations with this whole area, well, there are many, but one is that we don't get adequate funding from the federal government for complying with federal law. That's a big and ongoing issue. With regard to the licensure, obviously it's really onerous that we have to have all these specific license requirements instead of just one license that, you know, multiple people might be able to, to fill the spot. But at this point, do we know what the status is of the licensure office at DPI? Are they still at this point working from home or is that ever going to change?
And I don't know if Dr. Boone would like to speak to that, but I met with the new superintendent last week and that was a comment I did not make publicly but privately to him that that would really help us because waiting four or five months for a license for someone that has been teaching 12 years in another state is unacceptable. And people are very frustrated with that. So having folks back in the office every day, working from home, I mean, I did it. We, everybody in this room did it at one point. It's, it's just, you're just not as productive. You can get things done, but, but I requested that they add licensure folks because we need our, our folks' process because it's very, it's frustrating, but it's also, it upsets our folks that they've taught all these years and they come to the state of North Carolina and then they're telling them they have to take a test and they've done the work for 12 years. So I did mention those things and he gave us his cell number, so I didn't want to bombard him day one and so he blocked me or anything, but I will continue because that is my. him day one, and so he blocked me or anything, but I will continue because that is my, that is my area, that's what I taught, so I'm very passionate about that. So, I will continue to have those conversations as well as the funding model because we have students that have a one-on-one nurse, a one-on-one teacher assistant, a teacher, specialized transportation, and we do not get enough financial resources to support the students. And our job as teachers and a public school system is to provide every child everything they need. So, I will continue to advocate for that. But to answer your question, I can't get a clear answer, but I'm not thinking they're back in the office every day, all day.
Okay. Well, I will, I just wanted to know because I will be seeing the School Boards Association Board of Directors meeting on Friday, assuming the weather allows that to go forward, and that's one of my big concerns, and I've mentioned it repeatedly to our local legislators as well. This is an easy thing, it's something they are already spending money on because people are being paid to work from home. And if I'm correct, Dr. Boone, isn't it an office of about ten people that do all the licensing for the entire state? I want everybody to understand. So, this is why, in a competitive environment where we are already not competitive salary-wise, we drag our feet getting people licensed, and then obviously, let's say you have an active-duty spouse who can go and work at a DODA school and make more money and doesn't have the same licensure challenge that we face. It's a real easy choice for them to make, and it's not going to be us. So, the competitive problem that we have is severe, and that's, that's something that doesn't cost the legislature any money to try and get DPI to actually do its job. So, thank you.
The first slide said that we had nineteen hundred, I'm probably talking around numbers, nineteen hundred students, and we went up to twenty-three hundred? I don't know if I'm the only one who is alarmed, but that's a twenty percent increase. And so, was that in one year?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we, are we doing something differently to identify more students, or I don't know who I'm asking that, who gets that question?
They're just coming in droves. We are, we are, we are, they're just, they're just coming. We're getting a lot of students that are being placed in foster cares in Craven County, and frequently, they are students with disabilities. And it seems like Craven right now is, is getting a lot of those kids. I don't know what it is. We know that the state only funds us for thirteen percent. So, every percent we're over, they're not giving us any money for those students at all. And so, we're trying really hard to make sure that our students are getting what they need in the classroom, and we're providing them the supports, the remediation, the interventions through the MTSS program prior to them needing services, if we can head it off. Unfortunately, a lot of these kids come in from out of state, and they've got elaborate IEPs, and it takes months to figure out what it looks like in North Carolina. And so, we're just having a lot of influx in those areas. And once they come after twenty days, you know what? We don't get any money for them at that point, so, no ADM money.
Okay, thank you. I just, that was a big increase, a twenty percent increase.
Absolutely.
Sorry, these are not my comments, but just while we're on the subject, would it be possible for Ms. Gover to give us a breakdown of, of what, how do I say this? The students that we serve and, yes, yes, how many, how many are in each? Because it's a wide range.
It is.
Even, even just ADHD is a disability, and then we have some that are, you know...
Yeah. A lot of our kids are LD or they're considered OHI.
So, it's a, it's a spectrum.
It is wide.
Yes.
Michelle, clarify that for the benefit of the public. You just used some acronyms, nobody knows what they are.
LD is learning disabled, and then OHI is other health impaired. So, when she said kids have ADHD perhaps, ADHD is in a category, a lot of times, it is a, it would be OHI or other health impaired.
Okay. And I would just say to kind of follow up on Ms. Spees's point, my understanding, and I don't, I know you did not come prepared with this data, but I think this is certainly something that Ms. Gover could also present. If you look at historically, not just in Craven, but nationwide, we have seen a chart historically over time that shows the rate of autism going high and to the right in our, in our country. So, I think there are legitimate reasons why this is happening. I mean, I'm not sure, we may all have different theories on why. It just, it, you know, it is what it is, and it's a consequence that we're going to have to deal with because, as the public also needs to understand, the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act, IDEA, requires that we serve these students according to their needs. It's not something we have a choice about doing, so.
Yes, Dr. Miller.
So, and that's a great example, autism. And people hear autism, and they think maybe of a student, they know autism can be a non-verbal student that has lots of needs, or a student, for example, that presented at the summit. We had a student with autism that presented at the summit to our teacher. So, when you hear that word, it can mean the service level of a student varies. It can be really intense, or they can be in a regular class, they just need supports. So, that's what makes it so difficult. Certainly, we can give you that by category of disability, but I also think it would be helpful for service time, the number of students that are like, served an hour compared to full-time every day, all day. So, I'll put that in my notes as well.
Yes, so great. Yes.
I have two questions. One, I'm concerned about us only getting funds for thirteen percent of our students. My understanding of the process is we report to DPI what we have, and then there's a state allocation formula. Are we not reporting the full amount to DPI?
We are. We do report the full amount, but they, they cap it at thirteen percent.
They cap it at thirteen percent? Because I did do a comparison of Craven with the other counties in the state, and we're in line with them, and it's between fifteen to twenty percent of their students are in the EC department statewide. So, I'm kind of surprised that they cap it below what the normal range is.
I'm surprised too, but...
And I would like for this board to consider going to Raleigh to ask for adjustment because that's, funding-wise, I believe the state has walked away from EC.
Absolutely. I would, I think everybody here would agree with that.
Yeah, I believe this board has to advocate for it. My second question is, good presentation, but I'm confused. I would like to know the number of vacancies that we have for EC, and I would like it to be reconciled between the HR report and the vacancy announcements online. If you could bring that data back, that would be good because each report has a different number, and so, and it's a big difference between the two reports. So, it would be nice to know the number of EC positions that are vacant.
Yes, Dr. Miller.
And Dr. Boone stepped out, but I can tell you that there's probably never going to be a time that they're exactly the same, and we really don't want them to be because we're processing folks to be employed every day. So, the vacancy announcement could have been taken down because the positions filled, but until the board approves, the other number may look different, but we can give you those numbers.
Well, my concern is today on the HR report, we're going to be approving ten more positions on the HR report than are in the vacancy announcements.
Would be probably ten more positions.
When we approve the HR report, there are ten more vacancy announcements for special ed on the HR report than existing in the vacancy announcement.
I'm not sure what you mean. I know that some of the postings may be for next school year. We have, you know, we're not...
I'm saying there's less postings than there are vacancies in the HR thing. So, if we don't post them, we can't fill them.
So, yeah, so I'm hearing a concern as a follow-up to try to reconcile the EC vacancies, and when we get to the HR report, we'll have a discussion around the EC vacancies and what's being presented there. When I saw the twenty percent increase, I didn't exactly get alarmed because I do acknowledge that even though we increased by four hundred students, again, that the time that services are delivered might not be an alarming kind of twenty percent. So, I think the information that Ms. Kitzinger has requested is helpful in giving us some transparency around that. Any other comments or discussion around the EC update? If not, yes, yes.
I just want to say thank you for stepping in for Ms. Gover, and you provided a little bit more information than I expected on this. But it is really hard to keep a full staff, obviously. You know, if we could conjure up a full, highly compensated staff, then we would. But there are fewer and fewer educated or education graduates these days, and even fewer that are licensed with EC. So, we are doing the best that we can, but ultimately, we are the adults in the room, and we have to adapt, and we have to do what we can, and it is our duty to give these students the services and the education that they deserve. And I can't wrap my brain around sending these students anywhere other than their home school. That, and that's just an inconvenience to them. It provides a difficulty to their family, and it bothers me that we ever did that. So, I'm glad that we're doing what we're doing, and I know that it's more difficult maybe for us as a system. So, I want to say thank you to those that are stepping up and that we're here to support them, and we're going to make it work, so.
Well, I will say that this has, in this capacity, this has been the best year for having the least number of EC concerns. We have more people to support, these TAs that are having to teach classrooms, these long-term subs, we have people that are showing up on a daily basis to help write IEPs, to help train new, new beginning teachers who have, who've got a degree in something, but it may not be education, and they don't have any idea how to move forward. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, and I wanted to ask Ms. Godwin, how did that go since you're here, getting that second classroom, honestly?
There were...
Yeah. Right. With the space.
Space better.
Okay. Okay.
There were challenges.
Yeah. And see, that's what I mean, you have a long-term sub in there, but it's working. It's not ideal by any means, but... Yeah, thank you.
There's nothing else on the EC topic? We're gonna, Dr. Boone, did you have something on EC on that?
The question about the vacancies and it not matching. So, when we pull the HR report for the benefit of the public, this is done on Friday, okay? Usually Friday afternoon. The numbers in HR change by the minute, by the hour. So, what you may see on Friday may look different than what you see online, for instance. Okay, I sent the board report out on Friday afternoon, and I already have two people in line to be hired for two EC vacancies. So, when you see those numbers on Friday, they may look different by Tuesday, or maybe even Thursday, by the time I provide an addendum, because we are steadily hiring people. I mean, it literally changes by the minute. But for the most part, we actually pull the vacancies from the website, from our job board, and put them on the board report. So, but when you see them for a number of days, because we work tirelessly on the weekends as well, checking background checks and sending people through because it's just that time of the year, and we want to get people in as soon as possible, what you will see in a difference of four days may be drastic.
I do appreciate that. I used to be in the business of counting and used to count positions, not whether they were filled or not, because I understand the vacancy rate changes minutely. However, this difference is too much to ignore. So, I'm hoping that you really have hired ten EC teachers since Friday, and that would explain the difference. Ten is a large number.
Okay. And I will also say this. So, when a vacancy comes up, EC is the first to know because they also receive the resignation, let's say if it's a resignation due to retirement or just a regular resignation. So, of course, EC is alerted to that because they pay for the funding for that teacher. But it is up to the discretion of the principal after meeting with EC on when they actually post that position. That actually goes through about ten people. It goes through the bookkeeper, it goes through the director, it goes through the assistant superintendent, and then it comes to everybody in human resources, including Dr. Dawson and I. So, between that time, it may actually just be en route, it just has to touch so many different people that you may not see the requisition for the job posted, or you may not see that the person has been hired for the position in the midst. But I will certainly check with any discrepancies that you've seen, Ms. Mason, and we will look at that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else on the EC update? If not, before we move on to the next item, we'd be an update on the attendance and discipline, I'd like us to take a ten-minute break. We've been in here for about an hour and a half or so. So, ten-minute break. And the next agenda item here is to get an update on the student attendance and behavior, and Ms. Michelle Lee is going to do the honors of that one also.
Along with my dream team is going to help me with this. And I'm just actually going to run through a few, I guess, the month before last, I did a presentation on chronic absenteeism. It was prior to the new board being sat. So I felt like it was important for me to go back through this with the new board, so they could really hear and understand where we are with chronic absenteeism. The state of North Carolina has a call of action to reduce absenteeism rate by 50% in five years. So if you look at the next slide, you can see the definition of chronic absenteeism is a student who is enrolled in a North Carolina public school for at least 10 school days at any time during the school year, and whose total number of absences is equal to or greater than 10% of the total number of days that such student has been enrolled at such school during the school year. So we know that if kids aren't in front of us, we can't teach them, and they can't learn. There was some controversy about this, because we don't want kids to come to school sick. But when you think about 10% of 180 days, if we were on the day model, you're talking about 18 or more days per year. So we're not talking about sending your kids to school, and we know every time a kid gets a sniffle, they don't need to go to the doctor. We understand that, too. But we're talking about, you would be amazed at the number of children that we're talking about, that every year, they miss 30, 40, 50 days of school. These are the children that are contributing to this chronic absenteeism. So I just want to make sure people know that we're not after parents when they keep their kids home sick. That's not what this is about. This is trying to get those kids in school that are historically, year after year, missing 20% of their schooling, or 10% or more, but we're really talking about high numbers. Next slide. We do have lawful absences and unlawful absences by general statute. So lawful absence means they have a temporary absence for school because they're sick, they have a medical or doctor's appointment, there's a death in the immediate family, they've been quarantined, they have to go to court for some kind of proceeding, they have educational opportunities with prior approval, or they're medically fragile. All of these are excused or lawful, is what it stated in the general, okay. And Dr. Monroe said he gave you this in your packet today. And so there's lots of reasons kids are out of school lawfully. Unlawful or unexcused, is what we used to call it, are students' willful absence from school with or without the knowledge of the parent, or a student's absent from school for any reason other than the ones that were listed above. So we're really talking about kids who are intentionally avoiding going to school. If you look at the next slide, you can see the state of North Carolina has a absenteeism, chronic absenteeism problem statewide. This is not just a Craven County problem, this is a statewide, national problem, actually. And Craven County is in the extreme category for 30% or more of our students being absent. Next slide. Chronic absent, so the next slide is about the national. So it's really doubled pre-post pandemic, from pre-post, from pre-pandemic to post-pandemic, I'm sorry. So it went from, in North Carolina, it went from about 20, 31% in North Carolina in 2022, and prior to that, it was 15%. You can see it doubled in the state of North Carolina, and then the same thing nationally, from 16 to 27% increase from before COVID to after COVID. So kids got in the habit of staying home. Next slide. So over 500,000 students are chronically absent in North Carolina schools. A half a million kids are chronically absent, and that's with those big numbers of absence, not just those kids had a sniffle and their mama had to keep them home. We're talking about significant absences. Next slide. And it doesn't matter what race you are, it doesn't matter how economically challenged you are, if you're an English language learner, it really doesn't matter. We are in the high 20, low 30% of kids that are absentee. So we're not able to pinpoint a specific group of people. It's across the board. If you'll notice on the next slide, this is our grade spans. Our highest are kindergarteners are absent the most, and 12th graders, and we know by 12th grade, there's, you know, they're about done, and they're trying to do a little senior itis probably. Our kindergarteners who come to school, they, parents, we hear a lot, well, they don't have to start school until they're seven, really. That's true. Compulsory education starts at age seven, but once you enroll your five-year-old, you have to send them to school, or you have to withdraw them. So kindergarten is, and kindergarten today isn't like kindergarten it used to be. These kids, this is the developmental area that they're really learning, those important foundational skills on being a good student. Next slide. And we know that when kids come to school, we make impacts. I'm telling you, our teachers are the best in the business. If you didn't get to come to Summit, you asked somebody about it. It was so good. We have the very best educators, and we have experts in our own backyard. We don't, we don't have to go and send people a long ways away, because we've got experts right here in Craven County. Next slide. So this is that chart that everybody talked about. So we took one low-performing school in Craven County, and this was a fifth-grade science classroom, but it's similar in ELA in math as well. Those kids last year scored 43, 48.3% proficient on the fifth-grade science end-of-grade test. When we took out all those kids that were chronically absent with those high numbers of absences, 100% of the students were proficient. When kids come to school, our kids are learning what they need to be proficient. This was true across all subjects. The consistent presence of our students in school boosts performance, and when kids come to school every day and are in class every day, they're maximizing their learning, and we can help them achieve their full potential. It didn't even matter if the growth status. It was really unusual. From a D school to a B school. So that's, when they come to school and they get high-quality instruction, it makes a difference. Okay, so the next slide is my last slide. It says, "Did you know, students with nine or fewer absences, these students significantly outperform total tested population by more than 20 to 30%, suggesting that consistent attendance has a profound positive impact on academic outcomes." When kids have 15 or more absences, they still outperform the total tested population, though the margin narrows to 10 to 15%. They miss more school compared to the first group, they still maintain a performance advantage, indicating that moderate absences. So those are the kids that we worry about, that do get sick a lot, they have strep throat a couple of times a year, that kind of kid. They're still going to be okay and perform better than the average. But when you start talking about kids that are missing 19 or more days a year, those kids have diminished performances in the classroom, and they certainly are not outperforming their peers any longer.
Good morning again. So I'm going to talk with you first about attendance versus absenteeism, and this has been updated slightly. So one of the things I wanted to first introduce to you is the principal monthly report. When we look at attendance, we have to look at the principal monthly report, and not necessarily looking at month-to-month, because some months are shorter than others. And so the principal monthly report is done every month or over a span of time. It is designated by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, and looks at student membership, attendance, withdrawals, specifically when we start talking about state funding and reporting purposes. So a couple of the key aspects of the principal monthly report that I would like for the board and just the public to understand, is that it will track how many students are actively enrolled and attending school at all of our 26 schools. It does have funding implications, so it's used to determine the average daily membership of the school. It will track withdrawals and transfers, and show when students leave school and the reason for their departure. It is used for state compliance to ensure that we are meeting the minimum reporting requirements, so specifically instructional hours, instructional minutes, and those types of things. And then data verification. Schools review this and verify that all student records are accurate before submitting the report. So every span of time, there's nine PMRs in a school year, the principals work with the data manager to review the data, and then once the data has been reviewed and everything is clear of errors and issues, the principal monthly report is submitted and then goes to the state level. So I wanted to show you, the 23-24 school year is there in that dark blue, so we're looking at, today, we're going to look at PMR 1, 2, 3, and 4. We're currently still in the submission phase of PMR 5. And so we're talking about the beginning of the year to most of September. PMR 2 is going to be most of October. PMR 3 is going to be most of November, and then when you look at PMR 4, you're starting to talk about most of December and maybe a little bit of January. So we're going to look at it in that general timeframe, but the actual dates will vary. If we go to the next slide, we're going to look at just our elementary schools for a second. And what we're looking at here is, based on the PMR, the attendance rates of our elementary schools. Dark blue is going to be the 23-24 school year, and then that teal color is going to be the 24-25 school year. So when we're talking about the beginning of the year and most of September, 14 out of our 15 elementary schools entered the year with lower attendance rates. So we did not start well, in the spirit of transparency, for the 24-25 school year with regard to elementary schools. With the exception of our 15th school, which would have been Creekside Elementary, and even there, they tied. It wasn't that they were above, it was the exact same rate. If we go to PMR 2 for our elementary schools, we start to see some increases. We moved to about nine out of our 15 schools, so now we're talking about the month of October. Nine out of 15 start to rise, two tie, but we are seeing a mindset shift, right? We're starting to see more and more attendance rates increase. Now PMR 3, if we go to that next slide, that is when we first came and spoke during the boardwork session about the importance of consistent attendance in schools. That's that first presentation we did, was during PMR. That's that first presentation we did was during PMR three window. And here you can start to see some substantial increases. So that lets us know that the word was getting out. People were starting to talk about this more and more. We see, we see substantial rises. And by PMR four.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dr. Batwell. I, I think we're having an audio issue. Sorry.
No, no, no problem. I wasn't sure if I was hearing it or not.
Thank you.
Okay, so we just talked about PMR three, which is when we first introduced um this statewide, district-wide initiative to really improve on attendance in our schools. PMR four, which is what we currently just ended, we're talking about the month of basically December. We are going to see now eleven out of our fifteen schools in elementary are higher than where they were this time, or that time last year. So that lets us know that we're starting, the schools are really starting to address how getting students in the seat and in front of quality instruction. If we go to the next slide, actually two more, thank you, one more, thank you. So this is a, a brief look at our current chronically absent students. Now, I do want to mention that due to the CISO changeover, moving from Power School to Infinite Campus, it is hard to track chronically absent in the prior year to where we are chronically absent in Infinite Campus. Uh, there are many, many reports now available in Infinite Campus that allowed us to pull this information very easily. But you will see a direct correlation between chronically absent students now that we're showing you. And then if we go a couple of slides back and look at the attendance rates, you'll see a correlation there. Higher attendance rates is going to equate, equate to less chronically absent students and vice versa. So here in elementary schools, the two areas that we really want to fo- um focus in on is going to be kindergarten and also pre-K attendance. That is not a surprise, um Ms. Lee mentioned it a little bit a moment ago, but kindergarten looks completely different. There, once the student is in school, regardless of age, they are supposed to attend. And if you do not intend for the kindergarten child to attend, then they need to be withdrawn until the compulsory age of age seven. But the other part regarding chronically absent students is that this idea of what does kindergarten look now, look like now? Kindergarten for me does not look like what kindergarten um looked like now. What I, you know, I had nap time. So that does not exist anymore in a kindergarten classroom, the instruction is very, very intense. And so we're still trying to get the word out to all stakeholders that kindergarten is an incredibly important age um and an important grade level for our children. If you go to the next slide, you're looking at our current chronically absenteeism absent rates for our elementary schools. Um, you can see Bridgeton and Havelock Elementary are currently really um honing in on their chronically absent children. But that slide will just give you some, some information on where we are with elementary schools at this time. Nurse Mack will address some of our chronic absenteeism and truancy issues here in just a moment, but I did want to share that slide. So in our elementary schools, as attendance rates decline, chronic absenteeism rates are increasing. We know that they're going to face foundational skill gaps, so they're going to struggle with basic reading, math, and writing, which is leading to early frustration. And when we have early frustration, um we really fight going to school. Um, we are seeing in particularly our young grades that separation anxiety is very much an issue. I have a second grader kindergarten, she did not want to release, right? She was having a really hard time letting go, and we see that in our younger children. It also, when children do not attend consistently, then we are seeing unrecognized learning needs. If we don't have them in the classroom, teachers are unable to determine if there is an early learning issue that needs to be diagnosed and addressed with um remediation and enrichment. And then, of course, lack of early monitoring, attendance issues not tracked or addressed will escalate over time. A somewhat chronically absent child in elementary will likely become a highly um truant child in grades to come. So if we go to middle school, PMR one, all five of our middle schools went into the year with lower rates than the previous year. So middle school did not start off, those students were having a hard time coming to school consistently. By PMR two, which would have been October, um, we are seeing some gradual increases for PMR two. If we could go to that next slide for me, please, thank you. We see three out of our schools starting to make increases, where two are still below, but you can see that this is some, sometimes some substantial work is being done in our middle schools. By PMR three, that's again when that first presentation came before the board, and now you can see all or above where they were at that time, the prior year. So I think middle school saw the most substantial increase during PMR three, which would have been the month of November. By PMR four, we are seeing a gradual continual rise. Yes, we do see some schools slightly under where they were. I heard, did it go out again? Um, PMR four, but it's minimal decreases, and we're talking about the month of December. And so sometimes our older students have a hard time when we're getting ready to change over with that semester. The next slide will show you our current chronically absent uh children for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The biggest issue here is going to be our sixth-grade students, grade six, and we attribute that to transition. It's very hard to move from fifth grade in an elementary school where you spent at least six years, if pre-K, seven years, and then you move into sixth grade. That is a huge transition for children, and so grade six has some concerns with chronic absenteeism. But also grade eight, just like with twelfth graders, I'm ready to move to high school. And we are starting to see, I'm starting to make more and more individual decisions as an eighth-grade child. I look at my parent and say, I'm not, you know, I'm not feeling it today. And sometimes they're allowed to make those decisions, right? And so we see some increases in our grade eight children. We see a direct correlation in the next slide with chronic absenteeism rates in middle school and lower attendance rates in our middle school. So you can see here um where we currently stand with our students who are chronically absent in middle school across the district. And so we are starting again, middle school started with severe attendance issues. Um, several factors were contributing to those challenges. We know that those students who were chronically um having a hard time coming are struggling in foundational skills, math, reading, other subjects. When they are struggling in those foundational areas, then it is going to make them harder to stay engaged. That's also where you start to see behaviors start to emerge, which will come up later in the presentation. It's much easier um to have behavioral issues than for someone to find out that I'm struggling instructionally. We are starting to see early negative attendance patterns that were not necessarily handled early on, but absences such as illness, family obligations, and other factors start to become habitual. And then we see warning signs that, some of the warning signs that may have existed in elementary school may not have been fully addressed. The student may not have gone to truant court with families. And because that's not addressed, it trickles or it moves itself into middle school. Okay? Despite the obstacles that we talked about in the earlier slide, you can see that the middle schools are working very aggressive to improve, aggressively, excuse me, to improve attendance rates through very specific targeted interventions and academic support that um the team behind will share here in a moment. So moving on, we go to high school. High schools actually started the year stronger than any of our other grade spans, which I, I found very interesting in looking at this data. Um, we had three out of the five above the previous year. So high school was ready to go, they're like, let's start school, I'm ready. Um, two out of the five did start uh lower, but you can see only slightly lower. So it wasn't as um huge as what we've seen with our elementary and middle schools. However, by PMR two, we see a huge dip, if we can go there. All five, in the month of October, attendance rates started becoming a massive concern. Again, in PMR three is when we talked about the importance of students being in school. And so it's not as prevalent, or it's not evident yet in PMR three. We're still operating um lower in many areas. But by PMR four, you see a huge increase in our high school attendance. A lot of that um has to do with some very significant steps that were put into place that will be addressed here in a moment. But also students start to become dangerously aware of, I'm in high school, my final exam counts for twenty-five percent of my grade, and if I do not attend, then I may not pass the course. And so by PMR four, they are really starting to see the importance of being in. We can certainly come back and talk about the start of the second semester, which is not currently available with PMR five, to see, do we see some fluctuations there? So high school chronically absent students, it's grade nine. Grade nine, which is exactly what we saw for grade six. The transition is huge for children, and so they have a hard time adjusting from middle school to high school. They start to fall behind in core subjects, it is a very intense pace. They have more individuality, they have more self-paced instruction, and that responsibility does tend to take a toll on our ninth graders. Um, we are continuing to address that, teachers are continuing to address building those relationships and ties with children, forming strong peer relationships and not negative ones, and then also offering additional activities outside of the core for children to be excited about coming to school. Not just athletics, but also the arts and so on. And again, just with middle school and also elementary, if absenteeism patterns from middle school or elementary school were not addressed, then they are likely going to surface in high school. Chronic absenteeism is going to be higher, if we can go, oh, perfect, you're there, or one more slide, sorry. You are going to see chronically absent children more in our traditional schools. Um, you are also going to see a higher number for New Bern High School, but New Bern High School is substantially larger than our other true traditional schools. But there are also some struggles with our chronically absent children across the district. One of those being during COVID, I learned how to do school a little bit differently, I got a job. And so now I am doing this, and it's hard for me to come to school. And so we do hear from principals and stakeholders across the district when we start to talk about chronically absent children. Dr. Batwell, um others, this, this particular child that we are having to work through with, just so you know, is working. And so we're trying to think of alternative ways to get them the education that they need. And um Dr. Monroe will address that here in just a moment. High schools, again, started the year relatively strong in terms of attendance. Over time, we did notice a decrease, but there are some improvements that are emerging, and chronic absenteeism in our higher grades still remains a concern. Um, traditional schools, of course, are, are feeling that the most. Ongoing efforts are in place to address these attendance challenges um and increase student engagement so that children know the importance of getting in the school. So I do want to go to the next slides quickly and talk about CVA, and then just Craven County schools as a whole. CVA is going to appear on the left-hand side of the screen. And we, we bring that one out because they're talking about grade four all the way to grade twelve. So it wouldn't be appropriate to put them in elementary, middle, or high. So we pull their data out separately. And CVA, CVA has a significant um attendance rate, which is to be expected. They do school a little bit differently for those children. And therefore, it's addressing, then these children may have been chronically absent in a traditional setting, that it may not have been a chronic absenteeism, absenteeism issue. They have a lot of different children that go to that school, but you can see the attendance rate is very high um for PMR one, two, three, and four for CVA. So in PMR one for Craven County schools, we started the year slightly slower with ninety-four point four percent. Um, we always like to see at least ninety-five percent or higher, which we did have in the previous year. If you move to PMR two, it decreases by point one percent, literally just aligned on where we were for the month of October. Again, PMR three is going to show that first time we came before you to talk about this importance, and you can see starting to move ahead with ninety-two point nine in comparison to where they were the year prior. And by PMR four, we're seeing an increase. Now, I do want to mention, while this is still lower, while this percentage is still lower than where we were for PMR one, it's still higher than where we were the year prior at that exact time. So it should, if we were not doing the things that we were doing, we might have seen us dip even below eighty-eight point five. But because efforts are in place, we're seeing a rise there. And so I do want to shout out, um, all of the schools, I can't stress this enough. All of the schools have really taken on this call to answering this. But I do want to shout out just some of the schools that reached out and said, hey, you know, if you talk about things that are going on with absenteeism, talk about some of the things that we're doing. Um, so you can kind of see there some of the things that are happening. Creekside Elementary School has monthly recognition for classrooms that have high attendance. Um, JT Barber does daily announcements of classrooms with perfect attendance, and they also have um quarterly perfect attendance awards for children with twenty, and then they can put their name in a hat for a twenty-five-dollar gift card. Um, James W. Smith has bragging badges and celebration when boards are full for attending. WJG does daily announcements, as with others, and then they do weekly, weekly recognitions for classrooms with fewest tardies earning the Golden Gator. I thought that was really cute. Um, West Craven Middle, talking about our middle schools, they do quarterly perfect attendance, and they are rewarded with free ice cream or chips. High schools, we talk about Havelock High School, they have perfect attendance recognized at their quarterly awards celebration. And then New Bern High School, um, I put this one last, and, and Ms. Mack will talk about this a little bit more, but they have done a substantial overhaul, and they established an attendance leadership team within their MTSS framework. The team meets weekly to analyze data, communicate with parents, and address chronic absenteeism. Since implementing the structured approach, the team has improved attendance monitoring, they've improved interventions and student support, and have contributed um to better attendance outcomes. So again, all schools are doing something unique, um but it is something that district-wide we've placed a great emphasis on. I am going to turn it over to Ms. Luanne Mack, who will talk to you about truancy in our district.
Good morning. Um, before I get started, and you can go to the next slide, please. I, I did want to drill down on some specific roles involved, not only with attendance, but the role with truancy. And just make sure everyone on the board, as well as in our public, understand that truancy or the school attendance law violation is related to unexcused absences, and it's ten or more is what would place someone in um an unlawful excuses. So what I have before you today is refer, I want to show the referrals with the social workers role. And you can see, um, and this is just around attendance. So um some historical data, a year ago, October, uh, our social workers went in and um looked at the processes for attendance in all the schools that they serve. And we know that Craven County Schools is a district of um continuous improvement. And one of the things that we noted is that there were different processes in every school. The goals were the same, the expected outcomes were the same, but the processes were a little different. So when we did, uh, we peeled the onion back, uh, I um charged our social workers with focusing on improving that process and um being um very transparent with the role of attendance. So you can see, if you look at the data from October, or from September a year ago to September now, this is the number of referrals that our social workers alone received. Now, remember, we only have five, and the five serve every one of our schools in our district. What I did with this team is, we also have five middle schools. So I based all our social workers um in each of their uh middle schools. And as you can see, the data that Dr. Batwell, Batwell provided is um we had uh quite a bit of um work to do in our middle schools. So we based uh the uh social workers there, and then they, we aligned their assignments with their feeder schools. So the schools that would feed in to their middle school, as well as the high school that their middle school would feed into. So the goal was to have less overlap, per se. So if a family um ended up being served in court, and they had um three or four siblings in different schools, that that social worker would represent that family um in that, in that arena. Now, what I would like to do is explain December. So anytime um I present data, I look at the trends, but I also want to look at the outliers. And you can see um compared to twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five, we went from a hundred and eighteen referrals December a year ago to four hundred and ninety-four. So let me tell you what happened. Um, in December, um, well, actually back in October, we took a deep dive uh at New Bern High School. And we looked at their refer, their attendance process, and we looked at the roles of the different individuals in the school. And so what they did is they created an attendance team. And that attendance team um is composed of an administrator, a data manager, their social worker, their school counselors rotate in. And then if they need any um, if they need any type of um consultation from the district, whether it be myself, the. And then as well as um Dr. Monroe. And so they really um have grabbed this process. And so the referrals to that social worker have gone exponentially because when the social worker receives a referral, her role at New Bern High School is um parent contact, the letters. If there is uh a violation in the school attendance law, she's the one that goes to the magistrate. And then she's the one that will appear in court um once um the, the, once that has been served, based on what the magistrate's orders. So. So I just want to make sure everybody understood where this outlier is and why things have changed. That would lead me into my next slide. So let's break this down, and let's look at some open cases. So our, we can, I, we have been very fortunate that our Craven County judicial system has partnered with Craven County Schools. They have given us a designated truancy day, where that is all they hear is truancy cases. They have aligned us with one of their judges, so that there's consistency throughout the school year for hearings around truancy. So one, so our truancy cases, our truancy court dates that have occurred this year were October 23rd, which has been aligned with our grading periods, and January the 8th. So the data you're seeing before you right now is looking at our schools and how many cases are actually still what we consider an open truancy case. So it's broken down by schools, and as you can see, some of the numbers are rather small, others have in, are a little bit higher. And basically, what this means is depending on what the number of days that the student had coming in and the parent was served, and then the timeframe from when they actually appeared in court was their improvement. That is one of the questions that have been asked. Another question that we're, that has been asked with our, to our parent is, is your student in court, is your student in court, is your student in school today? So our social worker, our school counselor, our administrators are all there as a team. They can answer the questions based on attendance, they can answer them based on academics, and they can answer the questions based on behaviors, which is clearly our MTSS model. So the cases that are currently open now will be heard on April the 9th, that is our next date, and there are cases that the judges, or the particular judge has given the parent opportunity to have improvement, to have their student in school. There are some situations where a trial occurred during that time, and there was a verdict made, and the parent will have to appear in April to receive their sentencing. So our, our court system has aligned with our school system and are working with us as well as the parents, because the optimal goal is to have the students in school. Next slide, please. So let's break it down into elementary schools. So you can see that the overall focus has been to improve the cases. And what I did is we looked at student, or parents that appeared, that had already been served, and that appeared in court in October, and those that had to come back in January. So what I did is I took those schools, I took those, these are individual students, and I took the data, and I compared what was their attendance rate when they had to, the parent had to first appear versus what was their attendance rate in January. Was there improvement, was there not? So you can see in different schools, AH Bangor, we had a 50% reduction, Bridgeston, 78%, JT Barber, 100%. We saw some variability in Vanceboro Farm Life, we saw some improvement, we saw some that did not. But the overall impact, if you just look at elementary schools with truancy, is we had a 22.63% reduction in those students that were, were already, had 10 or more absences, and their parents had been served to appear in court. Next slide. So when you look at the middle school, you can see the breakdown between their middle schools. You can see West Craven Middle School, some students had an improvement, some did not. You can see HJ McDonald, they had a particular student that had a 60% improvement with their attendance. Havelock Middle School, Grover Seafills, and Tucker Creek with a mixed improvement. So for our overall reduction in just our middle school with the parents that were served on, in October and January, we had a 14% reduction in those particular students in the middle school setting. Next slide, please. When you look at our high schools, our high schools, we showed that the district showed an overall of 15% reduction in total absences from October until January. And we can highlight our high schools, we can look at Havelock High School, who had quite a bit of, of improvement with their students, West Craven High School, at this ti, at that time in October, New Bern High School had a mixed improvement. But what I wanted to, to, to review today with you all is, with New Bern High School, I wanted to really give you some details as to what they've done. As we know, it's a larger school, and we know through Dr. Bowwell's data that there was attendance with the ninth graders, there was attendance with the 12th graders with issues. So let me, let me take a deep dive and just, and this was feedback that I received from their administrator. And it said that New Bern High School's attendance team and chronic absenteeism support, they established a leadership team through the MTSS framework. The attendance administrator implemented a structured weekly attendance team meeting that consisted of the counselors, the data manager, the school social worker, the testing coordinator, and senior coaches. The counselors rotate in, they analyze their data through Infinite Campus, they look at three, six, and 10-day absences, and they review the data on each one of these students. They, the administrator collaborates with the social worker to schedule and conduct parent and phone conference and meetings, the counselors assist as needed. All attendance data is documented in a centralized spreadsheet and infinite, and, and is validated through Infinite Campus for accuracy and accountability. Since implementing the weekly meetings in October, the team has achieved the following. They've achieved a reduction in incorrect mailing addresses. That was very important. So we had wrong addresses, and so attendance letters will be sending, sent out, and parents may or may not have been receiving them. Early identification of students' needs that may need to be in an alternative learning program, which Dr. Monroe will speak on in just a few minutes. Implementation of structured processes through long-term suspension, homebound services, and improving communication with stakeholders. All of these things strengthen the structured approach through their attendance monitoring, intervention effects, and overall student support to measure improved outcomes. So I really wanted to just take a deep dive with one school, and since New Bern High School is our largest high school and has some of the highest truancy numbers, I really wanted to, to show you what they're doing to improve their attendance. So with that said, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Two.
Okay, so we're going to look a little bit at discipline data. So this one, we're looking at a little bit differently. We're not looking at PMR at this point. What we're looking at now is actually month-to-month data. So we're talking about August to January 2024. You're going to see the prior year, and then the neck, very next slide will give you where we currently stand. So the first slide you're looking at is August to January last school year, so August 23 to January 24. The top five infractions for elementary school students was aggressive behavior, bus misbehavior, disruptive behavior, inappropriate behavior, and disrespect to faculty and staff, with aggressive behavior really standing as an outlier. I do want to note that this, again, was last school year, and there were not substantial infractions with regard to technology, cell phones, cyberbullying. I know that was something we talked about, a lot about last year. So it did not appear to be an, an area of great concern for our elementary schools. If you go to August 24 to January 25, the top five infractions would be disruptive behavior, disrespectful faculty and staff, aggressive behavior, inappropriate behavior, and insubordination. Cell phone use, again, does, it only accounts for about 4% of infractions as, as it did, wait, oop, I skipped a line. Look at that, I'm in middle school, there we go. Aggressive behavior decreased substantially to 22.9%. Bus misbehavior increased slightly to 14.3%. Disruptive behavior increased slightly to 12.4%. Inappropriate behavior also increased to 13.6%. And disrespect to faculty and staff decreased slightly to 4.5. So the top five infractions remain the same. Inappropriate use of technology, cell phone, cyberbullying, still not an area of concern for elementary schools, but we do have a concern that the top five infractions increased in, in a couple of areas. So now, we go to the next slide. Middle schools in August 23 to January 24, the top five infractions in this was disruptive behavior, disrespectful faculty and staff, aggressive behavior, inappropriate behavior, and insubordination actually tied at 10%. So the cell phone use accounted for about 4% of infractions by this time last year in our middle schools. So if we look at this year for our middle schools from August to January, disruptive behavior increased slightly to 4.7%. Disrespectful faculty of staff decreased to 6.5, which came down substantially from 10.3. Aggressive behavior increased to 15%. Inappropriate behavior increased very slightly to 10.6, and then insubordination decreased to 7.7. So note that cell phone use, misuse of technology accounted for 3.5% of infractions, so there was a decrease from 4% in the previous year. The top six infractions now for middle school from August to January 25 would be cutting class, excessive tardiness, insubordination, disruptive behavior, and then you do see cell phone use show up at 5.7, and it ties with skipping school. And so finally, we're looking at high schools. The top six infractions by this time last year was excessive tardiness, cutting class, cell phone use showed up at 10.4%, insubordination, disruptive behavior, and then being late to class. If we look at this year, up until January 2025, excessive tardiness decreased from 16.7 to 11.2, cutting class decreased from 13.7 to 12.4, cell phone use decreased from 10.4 to 5.7, insubordination decreased from 9.9 to 7.8, disruptive behavior from 7.2 to 6.7, and then being late to class decreased from 7.2 to 3.5. So the six areas identified this time last year, or had decreased in all areas this school year. The top six infractions now would be cutting class, excessive tardies, insubordination, disruptive behavior, cell phone use, and skipping school. And so I do want to mention that there are other infractions that appear on these graphs, but I do hope to share that you can tell the work that our schools are doing and all of the various stakeholders, because we aren't seeing high numbers in more severe offenses, reportable offenses, and things like that. I will turn this over to Dr. Greg Monroe, and he will talk to you more about how we are addressing the alternative, alternative learning needs for our children.
So along with the attendance codes that I handed you out of the SASSA manual, the student accounting, a student attendant and accounting manual that we follow, there's the third code that we use that is also, is an excuse absenteeist for suspensions. Those are coded as threes, those are days that they miss school, that we impose upon them. Now, the reason why we wanted to talk to you about the alternative learning process is because a lot of times when you look at the alternative, we're thinking about discipline. But I also want to build a frame of reference that will help with how we are using this for chronic absenteeism as well. Now, with regard to, to that, I pulled out from your policy, 3470 and 4305, which is the alternative learning program, and one of the things that stand out is the purpose for the alternative process or program is to deliver educational services required by General Statute 115C, 390 and 390.10, to students who serve long-term suspension discipline. Two, to provide concentrated support for students who are at risk or failure and/or deliver instructional and other services for students who may be disruptive and safe and orderly learning environment in a regular educational setting. Absenteeism and those disruptive behaviors. So in looking at that, our secondary schools all have a alternative learning program, which is based on the platform of EdMentum, and they are using it whenever there is a recommendation for long-term suspension, and if the superintendent opposes it, or if the, if it goes to a hearing. Next slide. You can see that at our middle schools, where they have the number of long-term suspension recommendations that they made compared to the alternative learning program assignments that are there. In some instances, you will see that there are one recommendation for long-term, but there are, such as in Grover Seafill, there's two students that are in their ALP program. And that is because this student demonstrated some at-risk things, the parent, the school administration worked together, and they say, you know, oftentimes talk with principals about putting round pegs in round holes, so that let's do what will work for, for the students. And so in some instances, they're using them for those instances where it's just not working in the regular setting for them. You can see there your numbers, the number of recommendations and the number of placements in their ALP. Now, this does not include homebound services. Homebound services are generally structured for those students who cannot come to school for medically, medical reasons. And so they are not included in your ALP. That is a service that is provided for those who, for whatever reason, cannot attend school. And that does not include some of the, the things that were encountered in previous years where homebound was used for other reasons that were not medical reason. Next slide. So at our three traditional high schools, they are using their ALP program. So, and you can see, again, in these slides here, how they are differ with the number of recommendations for long-term suspension and the number of placements that are in their ALP assignments. Again, they are using the, the language from the policy, those students who may be at risk. You know, there we were able to save a student at one of our high schools who had actually dropped out, and by encouraging, saying that we can, you can get your schooling this way different. So alternative does not equate, equate to being bad. It is equating to what can we do differently for the students so that they can continue their, their learning process, and hopefully, so we were able to get a student to drop back in by connecting them with some type of alternative learning situation. Just like to highlight New Bern High School, again, today with the number of recommendations that they've made up, and, and this is not to date, based on the number of recommendation made prior to this slide being, presentation being developed. But you can see that the number of students that are in their ALP program, it includes students that may be pregnant, it may be students who have those attendance issues, those students who just, you know, I can't seem to, to get it together. And by working with the schools, working with the administration, they are delivering the education in a way in which is helpful to the students. And so they are monitoring them, work with the school counselors, the administrations, the parents. So it's, everyone has to have some skin in the game in order for this to work. And so we can see that we're using our alternative learning programs to address multiple issues, discipline, at-risk behavior, which could fall into the absenteeism. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Monroe.
So I just want to wrap this up. I hope you all saw, I wanted, I tasked this team with telling a story. It really, all of these pieces come together for helping our students become good workers one day, they have good habits in place, and they're proficient in what they're learning. Truancy, behaviors, a lot of times turn into absenteeism that ends up being chronic. So they did a great job, didn't they do a great job? They did a great job on putting this together, and we'll be glad to take some questions, if you have any.
Yep, Ms. Daisy.
So thank you, I think this was my request, so I think I got everything I wanted, but I have a few follow-ups that I want to pose to a few of you. So Dr. Bowwell, on the, the discipline data, when I was looking at middle schools in particular, I noticed that, okay, now I'm seeing it. When I looked yesterday, I did not see the vaping, and now I see it. It's not showing up as a top five infraction, but it is showing up on both, correct? Or do I only, I only see it on the 23, 24 pie chart? Or do I only, I only see it on the 23-24 pie chart?
So what that would mean is if you look under, look at the slide, middle schools, August 24 to January 25.
Right.
Right at the top left where it says threat the physical attack at .9%. If you don't see vaping, that means that it is currently falling below that. All those beautiful tiny little stripes right next. It means that it is likely there, but it is accounting for less than .9%.
Okay, which is great. I mean, that's good. I just, we were discussing this, I was discussing it with some community members yesterday, and we were like, we know, we know it's happening, so we just noticed that we didn't see it on the pie chart. Okay, thanks for that clarification. And then for Ms. Mack, if you, I've got a couple of follow-ups for you, if you don't mind. So currently, I know you said that, you said you have five social workers.
Yes ma'am.
But you actually lost one, did you not?
I have one that, in gratitude to her, she's retiring on February 28th, so.
Okay, so we will be down to four.
Yes ma'am.
Which is a huge burden essentially. We're going to have to shift responsibilities for the remainder of the year at this point because given our budget situation, we are, and I want the public to understand, we're in a hiring freeze. So is that, is that your understanding?
Yes ma'am, but what we have done is the two social workers that will be picking up those schools, we have had a transition meeting virtually with each one of those. We have sent out communication to the principals. We've realigned their schedule based on the needs of those students so that the principals, the students, and the social workers can close that gap. So all of our schools will still be, continue to be served.
Okay, so I mean, I appreciate that. But I do think, I just want to underscore again, I think Dr. Boutwell's data, as well as your data, shows that the discussions that we are having here, focusing on the importance of this issue, and we know it's taken a while to essentially get everybody on the same page with processes and procedures. And we're making progress in a very difficult environment, is I guess my point. So it would certainly be my hope and desire that we keep the focus on this in order to continue to prioritize attendance for our students and families. But I appreciate that you have an interim plan. I just would love it if, as we look toward budget, I would love for us to make sure that at a minimum, we have five because we're talking about a lot of families in each geographical district that you have given to those social workers, right? Because for those of us who have been in court, we're talking about a lot of different files for folks to keep up with and specifics about all these situations.
Yes ma'am.
So, okay.
Dr. Miller?
I just want to clarify something about the frozen positions. Certainly, we're not freezing teaching positions and DC positions because whenever we can get them, we're freezing any administrative, including assistant principals, and any central office positions that are vacant, we're freezing. But teaching positions, they're open. We'll certainly take whatever teachers want to come here whenever they want to come.
Ms. Mason, did you have a comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I have two questions. I'm not sure who to direct them at, so it's probably Michelle Lee or Dr. Miller. And the handout you handed out under unlawful absences, can you clarify an unexcused tardiness? It says that if a student arrival after the start of the day for unlawful reasons, the time those student was present for the day should be recorded. However, it's listed under unlawful absences. So is a tardiness automatically a absence?
No, it depends on the time of day that they get there. So if they miss more than half of the day, it is an unexcused tardy, but it could also equate to an unexcused absence if, again, they miss more than 50%. If that means they show up late or if they're checked out early.
Great answer. Next one, it's as a whole. Whenever you want to correct a problem, there has to be a carrot and a stick. And I'm hearing the stick is truancy court, but I'm not hearing the carrot. What are we doing? Because when I was tutoring, you know, a lot of the high school students I worked with said, why do I have to go to school if I'm going to sit on a computer all day? I can do that from my couch. So what are we doing to improve that? And then second, it's a one-off and truancy court. A parent I know is putting their two kids on the bus, and the kids are going truant when they get to school. So what are we doing about that? Because the parent's currently in truancy court, but the child is going truant on the school's watch.
Well, one of those carrots, whether we like it or not, came through the North Carolina High School Athletic Association and DPI with middle school, junior high athletic sports. Counting absences as, an absence is an absence, excused or unexcused. So our athletes are coming to school. And one of the fruits of that has been that we have fewer athletes who lose eligibility between grading periods or between semesters. So that is one carrot. Like I said, whether we like the rule or not, it is one of those things. It's a motivator. Those students who are connected to school through athletics, through those things, are coming to school. So, you know, come to school, you get to participate. And so by having that alignment has definitely helped as well. And then with some of our older students that you're saying that the parent, I put them on the bus, I took them to school, they didn't show up. Sometimes it depends on, well, it's actually that age 16. So if they're age 16, well, we really won't get those numbers because we don't, we're not required to take them to truancy court because they're now outside of the compulsory attendance.
But it's supposed to be with parent's permission. Do we get that permission slip on file or not?
If they are absent and they don't.
Yeah, after age 16, you don't have to go to school with the parent's written permission.
Right, so if the parent is putting them on the bus and the student is skipping school and those other areas, again, in that manual, you know, we emphasize to those child family support teams, which includes the counselors, the nurses, the social workers, the administration, still reach out to the parents and they get the phone calls. Little Johnny was not in school today. And so again, it's an ongoing effort. It's not that we stopped tracking them. It is one of those things that we were not required to monitor.
But my question was, at age 16, you do not have to go to school with written permission. Do we have the written permission? And if we don't, are we still tracking them?
If the student stops coming to school and/or wants to drop out, we do have a process that they are required to come to the central office, have it signed off at the school, the parent, and then here at the central office in order to not come to school after the age of 16.
So we're only tracking those with parental permission, without parental permission?
Correct, so if they miss 10 consecutive days and they've not withdrawn, the parent hasn't requested for them to drop out of school, they are unenrolled, but we still continue to keep them on our roster until that point where they are either, they never show back up and their cohort year graduates, and then they are counted as a dropout.
Well, I appreciate Ms. Lee setting up a thing for us to go see effective computer usage in the schools because that is it. Because again, when I was tutoring, the biggest complaint I had was, if I'm just going to sit on a computer in school, why do I have to go to, you know, school? I can do that at home on my couch.
So, and I just want to say, every school leader this year, as part of their professional development plan, they had to have a goal about how they were going to address chronic absenteeism in their school. And so the carrot that you mentioned, that, you know, at elementary school, it's pizza parties, it's ice cream, it's perfect attendance awards, it's all of those things. At the middle school and high school, they have perfect attendance celebrations, they have perfect attendance dances, they have perfect attendance activities for kids who have done those things. They also have activities for kids who have raised or increased their academic attendance. So, and like at New Bern High School, that's a, they've put in some significant carrots. They have a breakfast for their students that have perfect attendance. So we're trying to put the carrot out there in a way that it'll hopefully encourage students to come to school. The part about the truancy, I mean, the parents are being, going to court for truancy and their kids are on the bus. I would want to look at their historical data because I would almost guarantee that these are children with significant chronic absenteeism along the way, and this isn't new to this family.
I would, I would tend to agree with you. I would want to do a deep dive. My information source is a police chief and a Bridgeton Police Chief.
Okay, well, we certainly can look at that. But I would, I would say more often than not, kids that are in truancy court, their parents have given up maybe and don't know what else to do. But they've, they've certainly had a historical.
Yeah, but as I said, in this one case, the police chief has been watching and been looking in on the family and is very concerned.
I'm going to first get to Ms. Kittinger and then to Dr. Miller.
I don't want to sound insensitive when I say this, but I think we all know what can happen when children are chronically absent. I mean, we've talked about this several times. I have said emotionally charged things about it. But at some point, like I mentioned earlier, we have to be the adults in the room. And maybe the carrot should be, hey, little Johnny, do you want your mommy to go to jail? I mean, do you want to be in a foster home? Do you not want to be in a home with your parents? Why is that not enough for some families? You know, I understand that it's not lost on me, or I think on any of us, that each family has their own situations. And it is heartbreaking in some cases, absolutely. And there are some things that we cannot get around, and I hate that for them. And there are just some things that can't be changed, and I hope that we can work with them. But in the majority of cases, from what I have experienced, like you said, parents have given up. And that just can't, that can't happen. We, when my children ask, why do I have to go to school? Well, because you need to learn, you need to become responsible, you need to be prepared to become an adult and a productive citizen of our country. And you're not going to do that by sitting home playing video games.
Right, and so in your family, that's what it looks like.
Yes, for me.
For some families, it's, if they go to school, they get fed.
Yes, absolutely.
They have other things.
And that too, and those are the families that we can't, I can't fathom what that feels like.
That's right.
But I know that that exists. And so I don't mean this to sound insensitive to them, but in those situations, also, what little that they do have, how much worse would it be if mom and dad weren't home? You know, like, do you want your mom and dad to go to jail because you're missing school? And I know that that sounds tough, but I give my children tough love. And I really don't mean that to sound as bad as it probably does. But we've got to do something, and we're doing it because we care about these kids and we care about these families. But the best place for these kids is school. You know, and that's really all. Sorry.
Dr. Miller?
And I too don't want to get into telling folks how to parent, but many times when we're discussing this with families and they say, I don't have anything to do. Every one of the kids has one of these. And if they don't have a job, somebody's paying for this. So I agree with the carrot too, but sometimes we all do things, and that's what we need to learn because it's the right thing to do, or it's the law, or it's the... So if there are folks that are putting their kids on a bus and they're not getting in our schools, those principals and school leaders and social workers need to know about it because that is not typical for a child to just get on a bus to go to school and then not go in the school. So my concern is there's more to the story, and I would love to hear about that so I can follow up on it.
One of our student representatives, Angelina, has something she would like to say. Yep.
Hello, wait, hello. Okay, I think it's also about like the schools. Sorry. I think it's also about like the school's environment. Like I know at HHS, like we try to prosper a positive environment that also impacts for our students, and not just students, but also staff. I know for Havlock High School, we have a specific counselor for like military students that, you know, like military, like especially for students for high school, like they feel like they don't belong because it's like a new environment to them. So we have a specific counselor that like, hey, you know, like, hey, like, how are you doing? Like, they always are in there, like are in their life for all the four years. So I was also about like the environment of the school as well. That's it.
Thank you.
Relationship, relationship, relationship.
Ms. Daisy?
One follow-up, just since we're having this discussion about, and this is not the first time I've heard of situations where students are taking the bus to a school and not reporting to class. And so I think we are left in these situations. We have to take families to court. And I have been in court when we have heard parents literally say to the judge, where kids can walk to school. Yeah, I just want to sit at home and don't want to get up and walk to school. And I have heard a parent actually suggest that we somehow send a staff person to the home to bring the kid to school. And I'm here to say, that is not what we are here for. Parents have got to either put their child on the bus and ensure that they go to class. They're responsible. Or, you know, we, we are not able, nor can we, for all kinds of legal reasons, take custody of your child at your child's home. So parents have got to step up and help us and be good partners in this situation. And unfortunately, if that means a judge saying to the student, you understand that if you keep this up, it will mean your parent is in jail. That is what we have to do.
Dr. Boutwell, do you have something?
I do. I want to just follow up on the question from Vice President Mason. So we actually have cohort graduation. My department oversees the cohort graduation rate. So how long it takes a child to graduate in four years and how long a child takes to graduate, five years. So our department goes throughout the entire year and meets with all of our high schools over their cohort graduation. So the minute a child steps into grade nine, they have a grade nine entry date, and that starts their clock. And if they don't check in somewhere else, they belong to us. Even if they never come back, if they do not check in at another school, they fall on our cohort graduation. And so slightly different than tracking through truancy, that committee will meet and we literally go through every single child and look at the documentation we have to try to find the child and find out how far are they away from graduating and can we get them back in the building? And so last month, I was with Havlock for about four hours and we literally went through every single child. So a child that they may not have seen for two years, stopped coming in ninth grade because they were 16, they're still tracking, they're still making phone calls and trying to see if we could get them to come back in alternative ways. So that, we, it looks a little bit different, but the cohort graduation rate committee is meeting for all schools.
So follow-up question then. If we have students with a high truancy rate, and they're like the ones I were tutoring, do we offer them the Alternative Learning Program?
I believe, yes.
Yes, the schools, and again, they called me the policyman, I kind of crammed it down their throats. So look at ways that we can put round pigs in round hoes and stop trying to fit people where they don't work at. So oftentimes, they will call and go, here's the situation. This child, I said, so we now have a platform because by general statutes, we're required to offer some type of alternative learning program since we don't have a school, or alternative school with its own number. So by offering this alternative program, they have their own process, their intake process. So if it is a student that is, you know, they have to, again, have to put skin in the game. So they do try to offer them alternative ways of getting it. Now that we have the 22 credit situation now, we're also now having to revamp how we look at credit recovery and those kind of things. So again, they are offering what will work for you. They're asking what will work for you, and then trying to fit something that will at least keep them engaged in the process of graduation, towards graduation.
That's a really good carrot, that we could offer them Craven Virtual Academy or Alternative Learning for the parents that are struggling with their kids not wanting to go to school. to go to school because of the computer usage. And I hope we're using that carrot.
Absolutely. And if, you know, they're, you know, because those programs are computer basis, it's still, again, what will work for you and what are you willing to do? We have the resources. Do you have the drive, the motivations to do it? You know, because if I want it more than you want it, it's still not going to work.
Thank you all. I have just a couple of things. One, thank you, the presentations are good. I think all of you know that I love the data. I know you'll give an update probably in three, six months or something. So on the graphs that have the stacked bar graphs that have the number of students with chronic absenteeism, if you would, the next time you give an update, show that like this period and then how it changes. I'm not asking to go back and show last, in November and now, but that, I think that would be useful information to the board. Ms. Mack, I have a question about the social worker. So in December, the number of referrals is really high. I was just curious, is December a special kind of reporting month or something? Or was there anything there to note?
That was when, that was the cohesiveness with New Bern High School.
Okay.
When the, they, they put it all together.
Yep, okay, okay, good. And, yeah, I would just concur with the other comments about the parents and them having to have oversight and responsibility for their children. In 2022, a lot of us in this room rallied for the Parents' Bill of Rights. And if we're going to rally for parents to have a Bill of Rights, we've got to be willing to stand up and say, we're going to be responsible parents too. And so, yeah, I appreciate that sentiment also from most of this board. Thank you. Oh, Ms. Davis has one thing.
Sorry, I just want to bounce back to Patty's comment about the kid getting on the bus. Do we have anyone that stands out there when kids get off the bus? I know last year, when I dropped my child off at Grover, the assistant principal was always out there watching kids get off the bus.
And I would think particularly at middle school, high school has a little more independence. Well, I hate to say absolutely, but I know folks have either teachers or administrators that are assigned, what, the bus duty? So that's why I'm saying if we know the particular school and the issue, certainly we can send an administrator or someone out there to ensure. But I would feel very confident in saying, all the middle schools certainly have folks out there. High schools, again, you know, kids are driving to school and all that. But if we have a particular problem, I think it's on us, as Mr. Gatchel would say, once they get on the bus, they belong to us.
Yeah, that's the only reason I ask, because I'd be curious to know a little bit more about that situation. If the parent does put the kid on the bus, it's really not the parent's fault. But where's the miscommunication somewhere? Where's the kid going? Somebody sees the kid get off the bus, then where's the kid going?
And if the kid is going to West Craven, somebody's picking him up because he can't walk anywhere. In New Bern, they might could walk around town or something. So if you'll share some of that information, we'll look into it closely. But I would say that every school has a assistant principal that is assigned to bus, the bus duty. And then they have people that they charge with being at certain locations to make sure kids are getting off the bus. But we'll reiterate that with our principals and staff to make sure that is not changed.
And also, if you would refer back to the discipline data, Dr. Bowles showed that for those cases, we do know about skipping. And tardies were one of those top fives areas. So they're capturing those who were put on a bus or maybe in the building, those that sat on, you know, hearing yesterday, that was one of the issues with the student. He just, he was somewhere, but he wasn't where he was supposed to be at.
Sorry, is that what, cutting class or skipping school, how does that differ from like an absence? Like, cutting class is just you're dipping out into the bathroom or something or under the stairwell? And then skipping school is you're walking off the property?
Right, so if they wrote a referral for skipping, the likelihood is that they were marked absent in that, for that class period. Now, that's only for high school. K-8 does daily attendance, so it wouldn't be captured in an absence. So, high schools, your traditional high schools, would, it would probably, you probably look at that same day that they got a referral for not being in class, though they were in school, and it probably was marked absent or coded as absent because they were not in class at that time.
But I'm just asking, so, so that I understand, on the pie chart for the discipline, cutting class, I mean, an example of that would be you got busted under the stairwell and you're cutting class, or like for a period. Or the skipping school is you got seen walking off the property and pulled back.
Because, and that's recorded as a discipline, but like I said, you look at it, they probably were marked, coded as unexcused absent.
I have a question for you. You said, in high school, it's by classes and not the entire day. But in middle school, they're changing classes too. So if they skip a class, one class in middle school, are they marked absent for the day?
Well, they may have received, when middle schools takes their attendance, again, K-8 is daily attendance. And it's dependent on how the school is set up. I think only one middle school is set up odd from all the other ones. But with regard to what we're required to report, K-8 is daily attendance. So you're either present or you're absent at that one time that attendance is captured. High schools have period attendance, but they, it is also daily attendance. So if they were to come to two periods, that day, that school day, they got counted presence for the entire day. So it gets very complicated when you try to look at it and the way that it is reported out.
And I appreciate the complexity, but if I'm in middle school and I have the misfortune of missing the first period class, which is where attendance is counted, but I come after that, am I changed back to attending or am I still marked all day?
If you, when you check in, you get marked present for that day.
You're just tardy.
And then that would count, you know, if I just woke up late, then that would be an unexcused tardy, but then I'm marked present.
All right, thank you. It's just the way it was phrased.
Okay, anything else on that? Thank you all for that information. Next topic, let's go to hearing about the out of county water activity and field trips. This is, I think, Ms. Lee again, and this will require board approvals.
There is a slew. It is, it is field trip season. So they, these all meet the criteria of being turned in with the exception. If you, if you'll scroll up to right there, Havelock High School and New Bern High School has a, they have a star asterisk there. And the reason is because they did not, they had to add them late, added them yesterday because one of them, in order to, the JRTC, the JRTC, they need to start raising money. And there's, they had all of their stuff in, but they were worried they wouldn't have enough time to get the, to get the money raised. And then the second one in New Bern High School, that was a competition they just learned that they qualified for. So it's a short turnaround. They just found out that they would have, I think I said that completely backwards, but, I think I did. But all of these trips, they have turned in safety plans. We have gone through the whole process, would they have enough chaperones to meet the ratio requirement? And unless you have questions about specific ones, I would ask for you to approve.
So I move. I have questions on some of them.
Okay.
Craven Early College, Grover Sea Middle, West Craven School.
Madam Chair.
Tucker.
You have a motion?
Yeah. Did we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So.
Can I retract it?
You can.
I did the motion and we're have a question. Do you have a?
Yeah. And it's concerned with fundraising because, you know, we have a lot of non-influent families in Craven County. And I didn't see in their applications what they were doing for fundraising, other than asking the parents for the money.
So which, which ones were you?
Craven Early, Grover Sea, West Craven, and Tucker.
I can speak to that on some levels. I know the schools, in addition, they have sort of like the angel thing that they have for cafeterias, they have that at the schools, that community groups or churches will donate money for children that can't afford to go. Because it is in policy, you cannot deny any child the opportunity to go on a trip because they can't afford it. So the schools do different things. They might have, you know, sell candy bars, or they might do fruit or other things. But all children, because it's an academic activity, they cannot be denied. So there's different churches, you know, every school does something different, but they have lots of opportunities for children to raise funds or to, for someone to sponsor them.
And again, the only reason for my question is I didn't see it on the paperwork.
So on Grover Sea, the very last page says fundraising opportunities such as donations from the band, the school, local business and collective concerts are available to students. Deny the opportunity to participate in the financial hardships. So they're collectively raising the money for any kids that need to, need that. The Early College, I spoke with them specifically about their processes for turning, sorry, for raising money. And they had shared with me that they were going to do, pick a calendar fundraiser. I think it's listed, fundraising opportunities, and they're selling coupon books. So, what is going on? Pardon? So it's in the, it's in the page, the last page of the Craven College, then Tucker Creek.
I don't see it.
And I just would ask if, when, part of the process for submitting, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the process for submitting is that the teachers or administrators know that children won't be left out or deny the opportunity to, I mean, so.
So we pay for the trip if the parents can't afford it?
We raise money and help children. Sometimes parents will say, how, how pay for an extra kid if anybody doesn't have funding? But all the schools are doing some type of fundraising in order to cover it for the children, for all children, so that everybody can participate.
Are the children means test it? Because I know in the cafeteria.
Say that one more time.
Are the children's families means test it? Meaning if somebody like my child said they couldn't afford to go, that you would tell them, nope, you're wrong, you could afford to go?
No, absolutely not. We're not going to tell any child that, if a child comes to school and they say, my mama said I can't afford to go, but if someone else will pay for me to go, I can go, we're going to do our best to make sure that kid has, we have an angel or someone that's going to make sure that kid gets to go on that field trip.
Well, my concern is if it's not means tested, I would encourage parents to say that they can't afford it regardless of their income because we're going to pay for it anyway.
I would say our teachers know our students very well and they know the ones who have issues and truly need the help. We're not going to send a note home saying, if you can't pay, we'll pay for you. But I think our school leaders and our teachers know very well the students that struggle. They know, they build those relationships. And at times, students may not even tell you if they couldn't afford it. And the teachers will say to them, you know, I've got somebody that would like to, and I do that every year, sponsor a kid at one of the schools. And they say, an anonymous person would just like to pay for you to go. And, you know, thank you for being a good student. And it's a way that they can acknowledge that without making the student feel bad about it. So they know their students well and they watch out for their kids.
Yes, I can understand that and that a child, because we're talking kindergarten through 12th grade, we don't really know if a child is aware or not that their parents cannot have, does not have the resources. And so I would go back to, field trips for me are a little bit like recess and art supplies their kids. And, and so we don't need to, in my opinion, we don't need to over-engineer those opportunities. If our kids, if we have opportunities for kids to take field trips, we just, I think as community members, people make sure it happens. I was super encouraged to see more field trips being asked for approval, so.
And I'll just, I'm pretty, I'm pretty much a tyrant about field trips because if we go off and we get hurt, it's going to really be a bad thing. So if I bring it to you, you can better believe three to four people have put their eyes on this and we have everything in place, or I wouldn't bring it. Okay, thank you. But I don't need a vote.
Ms. J. C. D.
Yeah, I move that we adopt the.
Well, you've got a, a parent.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I would just add as a parent representative of this particular field trip, my daughter is going on this, I did get a copy of a financial assistance request and it asked if we needed any assistance, some assistance, no assistance, and even if you could pay for it, do you want to come to the agency? So I just thought I would share it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Thank you for sharing that. End of the discussion for now, and I think I heard a motion to.
Yeah, I did make a motion to adopt the field trips as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. A roll call vote, please, Dr. Miller?
All right, I'm still getting used to that.
And this is to approve the field trips as requested, Ms. Jennifer Dacey? Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kittinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we can take a short break or what's the?
Lunch is at noon.
Noon. We're gonna, we're gonna continue since we've got almost a half an hour here. So, Dr. Boone, if you would come to present the HR report.
And Madam Chair, while she's coming, I want to clarify a question that was asked earlier about the, and I want to make sure I'm understanding right, that the district website does not match what the board has in their hands for HR vacancies.
By more than 50%, exactly.
Well, I just went through every school and the only school that is not an exact match is Roger Bell and they're showing two ECTAs online and one ECTA on the HR report.
And I was going to say the same thing.
That's the only, the only difference, and every one of them is exactly aligned for EC positions in every school.
That is correct. And she told me that after you asked the question, so far as I knew. But I was going to say the same thing. I had Dr. Dawson do, go through and I went through and I didn't see any discrepancies except for that one, which I changed after Ms. Godwin told me. Well, good morning, Board, again. I bring before you Human Resources Report Number Eight for the month of February of 2025. It is my request that you all approve the Human Resources Report Number Eight so that we can get some people into those vacancies.
Ms. Dacey?
I move that we adopt the HR report.
Do we have a second or any questions?
Second.
And any discussion on the HR report? I have, so I had requested that dismissals not appear on the HR report without the board having a briefing, even though I do understand there are certain dismissals that can happen that do not require board approval. And the one that happens to be on this month's report does not require board approval. But I still just think, kind of in good measure, that the board should be briefed on dismissals before they're asked to vote on them, vote on a report. And that item is inclusive in that report, so.
Can we wait till after closed session then? Because we, you do have a closed session and then she can come back up with the report. And we may want to do that and move the HR report after closed session in the future so that.
Okay.
Because we, that would be the only time to brief you would be in closed session.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I know that. So, yeah, okay.
All right, so we'll bring it back?
So, yes, so we currently have a motion and a second. And we will, can, we can table those motions?
Technically, tabling would prohibit the.
Prohibit us from approving it today, which we obviously don't want to do.
Correct. So perhaps the folks would retract that motion.
I will be willing to withdraw the motion.
Okay, we have withdrawn the motion and second, so.
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we're going to move into the Superior Systems topic. And Mr. Stacy Lee is going to come up and give us an update on the replacement of the West Craven High Bandroom HVAC unit, and this will require a board vote.
Good morning and thank you. Yes, we're replacing the H C unit at West Craven High School Bandroom and the lowest qualified bid was Enico East at 104,250. So we're asking for approval for the project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second to accept the project?
Second.
We have a second. And Dr. Miller, could you please take a roll call vote?
And this is for the replacement of West Craven High Bandroom HVAC. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a presentation on the, the out of county tuition rate for the 25, 26 school year, so.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the recommended out of county tuition rate at $2,619.13 for the 2025, 26 school year pursuant to Craven County Board of Education Policy 4135, tuition for discretionary admissions. This amount represents an increase from the prior year, which was $2,258.60. It's based on the Local Per People Expenditure Report from DPI as of January 30th, 2024, which is presented here on the board.
Motion to accept.
Have a motion to accept the out of county tuition rate for next year, is there?
I will second it under the condition that I get to ask a question. Okay, so my question actually is not for Ms. Froming, is the, is the, is the audio working is my question, Brad? Because it's sounding like it's going in and out from up here. We think it's working? Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah, you were like literally going out as you're talking.
I followed someone smaller.
Yeah, okay. I don't think it was you, I think it was the microphone, so we gotta work on that. Okay.
All right. So we have a motion to accept the 25, 26 out of county tuition rate?
Discussion.
Do I have a, and I have a second for Ms. Stacy? And Dr. Miller?
Yes, so I, I just want, I have one other point on this and Dr. Miller raised it earlier. I would ask Ms. Froming and Dr. Miller to come back with changes, changes to this, the policy. Given the changes with A D M, I don't think that we can basically waive out of county tuition going forward as long as the child is enrolled in the first 20 days, given that we are going to be stuck with this current year's A D M. So I would like to ask that you all look at how to change the policy and come back with a revision.
Dr. Miller?
And, and I'll take some direction from the board so that we bring back a policy that will meet what you want us to do. So there's two ways. We can strike that out and everybody pays, or we can say if they were enrolled the first 20 days this year, because they will be in the A D M, it would only apply to new students enrolled for next year. So if I can hear from the board, we won't have to, you know, go back and forth with the policy, we can bring you what you would like us to, to bring.
I think that's accurate.
So my question is for Ms. Froming. I, how, how difficult logistically is it for you to sort out which students? I mean, is this, how many students are we talking about? I guess I don't really understand the magnitude. I just want to make sure that this is not an administrative headache for finance.
It actually falls back on to accountability.
Yeah, we, we would be able to either pull that up through.
Through address searches?
Through, through the, into the campus or Dr. Monroe, remember, that would still be a request.
Right.
They still have to request reassignment.
Okay.
So they would be on there and it would have their address where he would know out of county. So we would know those students who are this year, we can look at the day they even were enrolled to know that they were here within the first 20 days.
We had none that paid and we had 66 out of county within the first 20 days.
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody pays, that'll be 66 plus any other students that entered, that will enter next year or from this.
Definitely.
Next year, sorry.
If I could, I do want to say a lot of counties are, are stopping out of county transfers after the 20 days and they just don't allow it. So that might be a, a policy that we may even consider down the road.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I'm fine with that as well. I am just concerned about us in this budget situation not getting the measly state allotment that we receive for our A D M. So I just don't want us to be in a worse financial position. So my, my thought would be to, to, basically, I think, you know, if, if they're here this year and they're counted in the A D M, that's fine, but any new ones would have to pay out of county tuition next year.
And we'll bring that policy and, and then we can kind of go over it and make any changes the board directs us to make. But I think the sooner we do that, because families are going to hear this and wonder if they're here this year, do they have to come up with $2,600 or, so the sooner the board can take action on that, when they request that from Dr. Monroe, he can make sure to, to share that with them.
So could we add it for next month's agenda that we do review that out of county tuition policy? But for now, I have a motion on the table to approve the out of county tuition for the next school year and I have a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
All right, out of county tuition for next year, Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up. All right, next item, Ms. Froming. We are going to hear about the annual lottery application. This too will require a board vote.
That is correct. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the public school building capital fund application for $1,382,084, which will help pay the debt service on the limited obligation bonds for Craven County School. It must be submitted annually to release the funds to the payment on the school debt from the public school capital fund.
Motion to accept.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, I do have a question. However, maybe we can do it in discussion.
Into discussion, yes, Ms. Dacey?
So can you explain for the benefit of the public, this is, this is money that the county holds essentially, correct? Lottery funds? Can you just explain how this works?
I believe it's held by the state and then released to the county.
Right.
And the county releases it to us.
Right, so it's a long convoluted process for us to get.
It is, it's.
The lottery money that everybody thinks, you know, magically falls like man from heaven.
That, that's to pay for Creekside.
Right.
That would give you how long this has been going on.
Right, this is paying off Creekside, yes.
Just Creekside because it says elementary school and middle school.
And, and some other schools, but really the main part of this was the building of Creekside and then we did improvements in two other buildings.
And this is really just the annual kind of formality process to get those funds released?
Absolutely, yes.
So we have a motion to approve the lottery application by Ms. Mason, a second by Ms. Dacey. Any further discussion? If not, Dr. Miller, could we get a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the review, the first reading of some policies and we're going to start with Policy 2302, which is a remote participation in board meetings.
Madam Chair, I, I would request point of order that we break early for lunch because I have a lot of comments on this policy.
We can do that.
So rather than start the comment period and then have to break in the middle, it would make more sense to wait until we can discuss it as a whole.
We will do that. So we are going to break for lunch and we'll reconvene at 12:15, 12:30? I don't know. We're going to take a break and we're going to go into closed session, do our closed session now. And, yep.
What time are we re, what time are we?
Hold, hold one second, hold on just one second. I need a motion to go into closed session. Who would like to move to go into closed session?
But I'd also like you to say when we're coming back, 12:15 or 12:30, so for those that were asking to leave, they know when to return.
Well, we're going into closed session and I don't know how long that will take since we're not just taking a break from the meeting, a lunch break from the meeting. We're going into closed, and then I would ask, entertain a motion to go into closed session.
And Ms. Spees, I think you have the exact wording in your notebook that covers all the reasons.
Yeah, so you can enter, yeah, so you want to, yeah, right.
So I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to consult with an attorney in order to protect the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body and to consider the qualification, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of a public officer, employee, or prospective public officer, employee pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811, Section A3 and A6.
So moved.
I have a motion to go into closed session and a second to go into closed session. Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
All right, to go into closed session, Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.[1343.08]
The board met in closed session and no action was taken. Um, I'm sorry. The board met in closed session. Okay. And we're reconvening. Um, and our first order of business will be to do the first reading of three policies.
HR report.
We're gonna, yes.
Okay. Um, good afternoon, board. I'm requesting an approval of HR report number eight for the month of February 2025.
I would entertain a motion to approve the HR report.
So moved.
And a second, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second from Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion about the HR report that's about to be voted on? If not, Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
I'll be happy to. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Squeeze?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, board.
Next, um, agenda item will be the first reading of, um, we have three policies today. We will start with policy 2302, remote participation in board meetings. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Kitzinger?
Um, so I should've written down my notes and maybe printed this off in handwritten them so I could keep myself organized as to where I have my comments, but overall, um, I'm okay with the majority of it. I think mostly I just have concerns regarding closed session and remote participation. Um, I basically don't think that we should be able to participate remotely in closed session. I mean, because the rest of us that are in this room have no clue where the person is at, who's in the room, who could be listening. Um, and I don't think just that they're on video is enough for us.
Well, as you go, it goes to trust.
That, well, that's privacy.
Right. So you need to trust that the board member doesn't have anybody else in the room, just like we trust other issues.
To do their job. That they're being paid to do.
I would concur with Ms. Kitzinger on that, actually, that we should not convene in closed session remotely.
I mean, we, to me, it's, I understand what you're saying is in trust, yes, but this board is probably going to take a while to build that amount of trust, um, unfortunately. And I think that we need to take steps to try to garner that trust between each other. Um, but trusting our employees that they're doing their job, um, to me is a lot different than kicking them out of the room while we're in closed session and resting assured that we are having confidential conversations amongst ourselves. That's just my opinion.
I have some concerns. It was edited to get rid of local declared emergencies and it's only state declared emergencies. And I, I think we need to include local or state, not just state. Um, then, um, and then in item number two, on the second page, it does say state or local, so we're not consistent within the same document for editing. Then finally, um, we, we state that a member could participate by phone, but then on page four, on seven B, we state, no, you can only do it if you see, so we're not consistent. Um, so I'm like, uh, not understanding that. Um, and on page five, we say you have to have 24 hours notice. That means if you wake up sick that day, come to work regardless of what the doctor says. Um, so you're, you know, I don't, I don't think that's very consistent. Um, on item four, we say you can't do chat instant messages. Is that only applying to remote meetings or does that apply to all meetings? I see inconsistency with other policies. Number eight, I would like stricken as an entirety, all votes will be taken by the voice vote. I don't see taking away the chair's prerogative of how to hold a vote in a policy document like this. There's roll call votes, that means you can't do a roll call vote. So, um, I object to that. Um, I think item
The board met and closed session and no action was taken. The board met in closed session. Okay. And we're reconvening. And our first order of business will be to do the first reading of three policies. Oh, HR report. We're gonna... Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, board. I'm requesting an approval of HR report number eight for the month of February 2025.
I would entertain a motion to approve the HR report.
So moved.
And a second, do we have a second? And a second from Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion about the HR report that's about to be voted on? If not, Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
I'll be happy to. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, board.
Next. Agenda item will be the first reading of, we have three policies today. We will start with policy 2302, Remote Participation in Board Meetings. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Kitzinger?
So, I should have written down my notes and maybe printed this off in handwritten, so I could keep myself organized as to where I have my comments. But overall, I'm okay with the majority of it. I think mostly I just have concerns regarding closed session and remote participation. I basically don't think that we should be able to participate remotely in closed session. I mean, because the rest of us that are in this room have no clue where the person is at, who's in the room, who could be listening. And I don't think just that they're on video is enough for us.
Well, as you go, it goes to trust.
That, well, that's privacy.
Right, so you need to trust that the board member doesn't have anybody else in the room, just like we trust other issues.
To do their job. That they're being paid to do.
I would concur with Ms. Kitzinger on that, actually, that we should not convene in closed session remotely.
I mean, we, to me, it's, I understand what you're saying is in trust, yes. But this board is probably going to take a while to build that amount of trust, unfortunately. And I think that we need to take steps to try to garner that trust between each other. But trusting our employees that they're doing their job, to me, is a lot different than kicking them out of the room while we're in closed session and resting assured that we are having confidential conversations amongst ourselves. That's just my opinion.
I have some concerns. It was edited to get rid of local declared emergencies, and it's only state declared emergencies. And I, I think we need to include local or state, not just state. Then, and then in item number two, on the second page, it does say state or local. So we're not consistent within the same document for editing. Then finally, we, we state that a member could participate by phone. But then on page four, on seven B, we state, no, you can only do it if you see, so we're not consistent. So I'm like, not understanding that. And on page five, we say you have to have 24 hours notice. That means if you wake up sick that day, come to work regardless of what the doctor says. So you're, you know, I don't, I don't think that's very consistent. On item four, we say you can't do chat instant messages. Is that only applying to remote meetings, or does that apply to all meetings? I see inconsistency with other policies. Number eight, I would like stricken as an entirety, all votes will be taken by the voice vote. I don't see taking away the chair's prerogative of how to hold a vote in a policy document like this. There's roll call votes, that means you can't do a roll call vote. So I object to that. I think item number three on page six needs to say the board does not need to provide a physical location for the public to listen because we are doing it virtually, so we need to accommodate that. Members, it says members participating will be counted as present. That's against NC, North Carolina State Board Associations. They say you will not be counted as present, and it does not count towards the quorum. Item number seven, I require clarification on, I didn't understand it at all. And on number eight, when a member is considered present, if there's a communication thing, it doesn't allow for bringing the member up to speed. If there was a communication gaffe, which, you know, as an IT person, that happens. And those are my comments.
Yes, Ms. Stacy.
Okay, so a couple of comments. I share Ms. Kitzinger's concern about video participation during closed session. And I think that all the issues Ms. Mason has raised, all of these revisions were made by the School Boards Association. So I would suggest that all of these questions be forwarded to them. We're paying for that service that they provide to update these policies. And so I think the fastest and simplest way and most economical way to address those issues is to have these questions go to them directly. I would say that with regard to your concern about a voice vote, I think the whole point of that is that if you're having people participate by video, they're not going to see people raising their hand necessarily. They, they need to hear a voice. And a voice, that does not mean that you cannot do a roll call because a roll call would essentially mean that you would have to speak in order to vote. So it would still give the chair that prerogative. I don't have an issue with that. But that would be my recommendation, that we send these questions that she's raised, or Ms. Neldruck could forward those to the association.
I'll gladly type them up for board approval to send.
I don't think they need board approval.
Well, I would feel more comfortable if the board knew what was being sent before it was sent, since we're asking.
Can you give me the reference, the page reference to that?
Where, what are you, you're saying you would feel more comfortable if the board knew?
I'll type up the concerns.
Yes.
As suggested, I believe that's an appropriate action.
Yeah.
However, I would like to send it to the rest of the board first to make sure
Yes.
that it's consistent with the board as a whole on understanding. And if they want different wording, then different wording. I mean, edits need to be entertained, I believe.
Yes, this is just a first reading of the policy.
Right, well, that is, I mean, you're, you're assuming, Ms. Mason, however, that your concerns are shared, and I don't think that they are. I mean, I think your concerns may be your concerns alone, in which case you can deal directly through Ms. Neldruck with the School Boards Association.
I would gladly deal with them alone. But I would also make a motion that this policy remain in first reading until the questions are resolved.
I second that.
Yes. Do we need a motion to do that? To bring it out of?
Whether you need a motion, you have a motion.
Right, yes.
And so you need to deal...
To, to remain in first reading, it will not go to second reading.
That is what I understand.
Okay, so we have a motion to do that, do we have a second?
Yes.
A second, okay.
Could you please take a roll call vote, Dr. Miller?
And this is for the policy 2302, Remote Participation in Board Meetings to Remain in First Reading. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
No.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Is this only for her, for her requests?
No, it's a, this is about the
I understand.
Policy stays in first read.
For, for all of our concerns.
For any, for any, or no concerns at all.
Precarious. Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Policy will remain in first read.
The next poll.
The next policy in first reading is policy 5022, Registered Sex Offenders. I think if we look up here, we can see the modifications that were made to it.
I also have discussion on page one. Number two, I would like frequently struck and for it just to say school system where minors congregate, frequent or not. I don't think we want sex offenders in any area that they congregate, not just frequently. Then on page two, where they're talking about voting, they're notifying the principal. So before you can walk into the school to vote, you got to go to the principal's office and get permission to vote. It's an enforcement issue with me. There's a chief judge on the premises, and the chief judge is fully qualified to make that decision. So, you know, the chief judge should also know who is in the voting premises and what is going on. And how do we enforce that this happened? Because if you just go to the principal, there's no obligation to tell the chief judge. So the chief judge has no control over the voting enclosure. So, and on page three, where we're talking about contractual person, we have for all contracted employees, yeah, in section B, we have, hang on. Never mind. I would like a section added for volunteers. Can volunteers, do they follow the same rules or not follow the same rules? We have it in another policy that volunteers do follow the same rules as employees. Yet that's kind of convoluted the way we do it, and I believe clarification for volunteers needed to be added to this. And then on page four, we say that the provision of being on the sex offender list applies only to contracts with a single individual. So if we have, if we have a contract with multiple, with a company with multiple individuals, I could read this as this does not apply to the company that has multiple employees.
Yes, Ms. Stacy?
So it looks to me as though the vast majority of these changes were made to comport with statutory changes. So I have a really hard time arguing with the, the General Assembly when they make the law that we have to follow. I will also say that I don't understand the, your issue with regard to volunteers because this is a policy that deals with registered sex offenders. So any, any other policy that might be dealing with volunteers would be an altogether separate issue. We would never have volunteers discussed in a policy relating to registered sex offenders.
Well, we have in another policy that the rules apply to both employees and volunteers equally. And so I think to clear the mud, we need to explicitly say in this one, are volunteers included or not? Because I think it, it's strange the way we have it. And I would also counter that a majority of these changes are recommended, not required.
Mr. Gatchel? Yes, Mr. Gatchel?
Might I suggest that a similar process be undertaken? Send these to writing, send them to School Boards Association. I can forecast if I were the recipient of the request, I believe there's some basis. Keeping this policy of current draft, but paying someone else to have that conversation, pay me to have that conversation. I'd recommend following the same process.
So then I make a motion that this remain in first reading until clarification is obtained.
I have a motion on the floor to keep this policy in first reading.
Do I have a second?
I have a second from Ms. Gibbs. Is there any discussion about leaving it in first reading? Yes.
So the difference between this policy and the previous policy is that these, these changes are driven by statutes that are in effect no matter what you do. And so perhaps there's not as good a reason to leave it in first read to reflect statute law. I doubt that you're going to get back a response much less.
Okay.
Well, as I said, not all the changes are required. But if we're not going to keep it in first reading, there's no point in sending a letter.
Right.
You can still get a response before next meeting, form decision on second. I would say it's worth your while to inquire of the School Boards Association. You're paying the service.
Send an email.
We're paying for them to answer your question.
I, I agree, but I cannot guarantee the response time from the School Board Association. And there's also a policy that, you know, we would be finishing the first read and the update essentially on Thursday at the same time.
Next month, that, the whole purpose of first reading is to do things exactly like you're doing. And then we would bring those back. And if, if you're not satisfied with the changes, then you would move it to the next month. So the whole purpose of first meet, read is to have these conversations and have concerns. And then we will reach out to the school board. They have attorneys assigned to each school district, like each attorney might have five or six school districts. And they're typically pretty responsive, but certainly they would have, they would be responding by the next board meeting. And then we'd, we would bring back those changes. So it doesn't go to second read on Thursday night, it's, it's the next month that it would come back.
My mistake.
And there's no compulsion, just because it's on second read, that you have to approve, particularly if questions haven't been answered.
Right, I mean, we have to follow the statute with or without the
With or without.
We have to follow the statute. So we had a motion to keep it in first reading and second.
To keep it in first reading, and we're going to keep it in first, or no? Well, yes, I know, I'm just saying, is there any more discussion on that? Okay, Dr. Miller, would you please take a, a roll call vote?
So policy 5022, Registered Sex Offenders, to keep it in first read, Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
No.
Ms. Amy Davis?
No.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
No.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
No.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
No.
The motion fails. But we will still follow up, just like we would in answer any questions. And as Mr. Gatchel said, on second read, if you're not satisfied with it, the board can choose not to approve it, so.
Can you please give me an address, email address to send the questions to?
The third and last policy for first reading this month is a new policy. It's policy, I think, are the multiple number indications to say we're not sure where it will fall? Are those referenced policies?
Many policies, like for example, the student, it may be understood that their same rules may apply for staff, it may apply for... So this policy is in the 5,000s, the 6,000s, and the 7,000s.
Okay, and it is emergency administration of a word I cannot pronounce, Narcan.
Narcan is the most common name.
Yes, it's a over the counter, Narcan is best I could tell from the policy reading. Yes, Ms. Stacy.
So I think it would be really beneficial if our Director of Health Services, if Ms. Mack, could come and walk the board through the reason why this policy came about and why she has taken the steps that she has to bring it to our attention out of concern for the safety of our students and staff. And she can go through that history. And then I would strongly encourage the board that we not sit on this policy, but move quickly, so.
So I bring before you policy code 502361287268, the emergency administration of Narcan, brand name is Narcan. So currently, in our school system, we have SROs that carry Narcan. However, we also have a nurse in every school that through the North Carolina Board of Nursing can administer Narcan on site. So what we have done is we have partnered with our Craven County Health Department. And through their memorandum of agreement, they have agreed to supply our school system with Narcan. I have reached out to our school nurse consultant. We got the orders that are required for a nurse to administer it, should it be needed. And I also have received the standing orders from the medical director for the health department. If a nurse administers Narcan and the orders fall under the medical director of our health department, the nurse cannot delegate the Narcan to backup staff because of the assessment and the competency training based on the orders that has to occur. So what we have done is, you know, our required workdays are sometimes few and not always at the exact time we'd like them. So back on January 9th, we trained all of our school nurses on Narcan. We signed off on their competencies. We have a procedure and protocol in place for the administration of Narcan. And we have received the standing orders from the health department as well as the orders for the Narcan. The Narcan will be housed with the school nurse in, in every school. And the Narcan currently is, is sitting in my office waiting for this board to review this policy and hopefully approve this. So I just wanted to share the background information. I'm not going through this, but this was the manual that we created to, to train all of our staff. So we have a well-trained staff of nurses that could administer Narcan should it be necessary. And we also have the Narcan available at our school system for no charge to Craven County schools.
So I have a question. I think this is important, I think it does need to go forward. But I had originally was going to ask for the edit of one, at least two school employees. However, if the SRO is included as one of the two, I'm satisfied. Could we modify the policy? Was that work to say the, at least one school employee and the SRO?
So under section B, we can designate it as one school employee. But if you go further down to C, where it says this policy applies only to the use of the school system supplied Narcan, nothing in this policy is intended to regulate, restrict, or deter law enforcement, firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, or other authorized for administering their own supplies. So this would cover the SRO as well. So the designated employee for the, each school from the principal would be the school nurse.
So that would give at least two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is the intent for this to be used for students specifically, or is it for anybody?
Anyone that should enter our school system, or our school, that should present with any type of symptoms of an opioid overdose.
So, so, so if a person was at a ballgame, would we, okay?
Now, now, our school nurse, they do not cover extracurricular activities. So that's where our local paramedics, EMS.
So for school events, we would not have somebody available to offer it?
The Craven County Sheriff's Department, they, they carry Narcan. And we have law enforcement, multiple law enforcements that attend our, our sports events.
But it would be more than just sporting events, it would be all events, because there's like plays... It would be all events, because there's like plays and other things.
It doesn't apply to extracurricular, I think is the point.
Correct.
Right. It's for...
Because if, right, if you look at Section A, the last paragraph, the last sentence, it says, "The board cannot and does not guarantee that the school system supplied Narcan or a person trained its use will be available in any particular situation."
Yes. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Dacey?
I would move that we go ahead and adopt this policy today, so that Nurse Mack can move forward with implementation. I don't see any reason to wait on something that's important when we know that it's possible. I don't know how likely, but it's certainly possible that it could be needed between now and the next time we meet.
Second?
I have a motion to approve this policy.
For first read or for second read?
I'd like to put it on the consent agenda.
Well, what I heard the motion was to approve it immediately.
Immediately was the motion. Yes, sir.
So, I have a motion to approve this policy. It's good in its first reading form, and to approve the policy now. And I think I heard a second. Okay? Any further discussion before we approve the policy? Before we take a vote to approve the policy?
I just want to say thank you, Nurse Mack. I hope that this doesn't need to be used in any of our schools, on any of our students or staff or visitors, but thank you for getting this done.
Any other discussion? Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
Okay, again, adopting policy 5023, along with the other policy numbers, today. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Policy is adopted.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move to the second reading of two policies. One, the first of those is policy 2020, the duties of officers. So, we had this last month. I just want to comment that in Section A, the duties of the chairperson, I recalled that we were going to make Letter J, the chair providing direction to the board attorney outside of scheduled board meetings, to be specific to truancy-related incidents. Even as the currently seated chairperson, I think it's dangerous to have that as a spelled-out responsibility of the chair. And, yes. Ms. Dacey?
So, I think that if, there's been a lot of discussion about what actually happened at that point in the meeting, and I think it was because of how things were proceeding that it became confusing. But my motion was there and then to give the board attorney direction to attend truancy court. It had nothing to do with editing the policy. Okay? For clarification. I am open to discussing editing the policy, but I wanted it to be clear that if staff feel like they would like to have the board attorney present in court for truancy court, that he has the permission of the entire board to be there. Which passed.
So, I mean, I just still would say that I think Letter J should be removed. But, is there any additional discussion?
So, I guess, Madam Chair, you would like to strike Section J?
I would like to strike Letter J from Letter A, the duties of the chair. And Letter J says that one of the duties of the chairperson is to provide direction to the board attorney outside of scheduled board meetings, for the chair to be able to do that.
I would concur with that, because it's, the board as a whole, when it meets, is what is empowered.
And again, I did check six other school districts. It doesn't appear on any other board policy. And I know the policy can be changed at any time, but I think it could be dangerous. So.
I make a motion to strike Section J.
Have a motion to strike Section J, Letter J? Do I have a second?
I second.
And I have a second to strike Letter J. Is there any discussion before we take a roll call vote? Okay, Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
I need to make sure the motion, is it just to strike J, or is it to adopt the current policy with the addition of J?
To adopt it with striking of J.
That's what I thought the intent was, but I didn't want to put words. So, you're adopting the policy with the addition of striking J?
Yes. And is that, Ms. Davis, is that also your second today?
I thought that was the intent, but I wanted to make sure. Okay, Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next policy for second reading is policy 4150, school assignment and reassignment. And? Oh, please do. Okay, Ms. Lee is going to tell us what modifications have been made.
I'll be glad to just give you the gist of this. In Section 8 of our reassignment policy, there is a, it talks about admission to a magnet school or other choice, school of choice. So, we wanted to make sure that it was very clear that we have, while we have no magnet schools, we do have several schools of choice that can be, people can complete application to attend outside of their attendance zone. And then, there was two areas in B and E that we are asking to be struck. So, we would say efficient use of the school facilities and transportation resources, because if you apply to a school, like, one of these at four-choice schools, you have to provide your own transportation, and that's part of the criteria. And so, then that too says we would take away the hardship, just like we did with everything else. That's not part of it.
I have a question. At the community engagement in January, we did say we have four magnet schools, and now we're saying we don't. When did we reclassify those schools?
We've never had any magnet schools. We have four restart schools.
Correct. But on the paperwork that was handed out, we called them magnet schools.
No, I mean, I did not. I don't know, I need you to produce that, because I don't, I'm not aware of that. I did, there was a comment made at some point that JT Barber was going to be a magnet school. And to be a magnet school, you have to be a part of a much bigger and broader program, Magnet Schools of America, or some of those, and we are not part of that. So, these will be schools of choice, and we have identified them as the four. We have four restart schools, and three of the four are on application basis, if desired by families.
And some may also say, like, the early colleges would be a choice option. JT Barber is, the plan is for them to be similar to a magnet school, but not with that status, but a school of choice, that if parents wanted to participate in the arts, that they could choose JT Barber. So, magnet is not the correct term. The other schools are restart schools.
Yes.
So, Ms. Lee, could you clarify for the benefit of the board and the public, which are the three schools of choice?
Oak Road Elementary, Roger, Oak Road Academy, Rogerville New Tech Academy, and JT Barber Elementary School.
Right. And JT Barber is an A-plus school, not because they have an A-plus grade yet, but it's a focus on the arts.
It is a focus on the arts.
Okay.
So, that's... Thank you, Ms. Lee. So, do I have a motion? Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve this policy as presented?
Yes. I move to adopt this policy as is.
I have a motion to accept this.
Second.
And a second. Is there any further discussion on this policy? Hearing none. Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
And again, this is to adopt policy 4150. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Policy adopted.
Thank you. And these would be on the Thursday consent agenda, but they're already adopted. So, these will not move to the Thursday consent agenda, just for the benefit of the board and the public. The next item is to take a look at the 2025-2026 board meeting schedule. We do not have to adopt this today, but it's to put it up here so that we can have some discussion about the proposed meeting schedule. And so, I welcome any feedback from the board on this.
I would like to see the award ceremony kind of spread out such that they're done in the schools, so that when you receive an award, you have your peers in front of you. In this room, or even at Grover Sea, not everybody can make it at night. And you're more than, it's more likely to encourage students to achieve better if it's done in front of their peers, because it's like, look at what you can achieve. Whereas, just before the board, I don't think is as lucrative.
Would you like to, during the day, at their schools?
Yeah. And we could work with the principals to divide it out such that it's not all on the same day, so that, you know, at least one or two board members could attend every ceremony.
So, I think, yes, Dr. Miller?
Do schools already have that? And the board will get an invitation to attend those. They each have their awards day and their ceremonies. And so, that is, certainly, the board attends, but that is not an official board meeting. So, these would be the two, and certainly, if you don't want to have those, but I remind the board that this is only for state, like, winners. It's not for local.
Right.
Both the local and the state will be recognized at the school level. But this is for state winners, and to be, yeah, and national winners to be recognized by the board, but it's certainly the prerogative of the board. But they do have the, the schools each have their own celebrations, and we'll make sure you get those. They're supposed to be on the board calendar that you guys have, so we will remind the administrators to make sure they're there, so you can attend.
Yep. I had just two comments. One was that both of the off-site meetings, one in December, one in May, are scheduled to be at Grover Sea Fields, and I would say if we could do one of those at Havelock and/or West Craven, I mean, both have a place to do that. I don't know, but I would just suggest that. And the other is that now with the approval of the new calendar that we looked at today, May 21st is going to be the day, the last day of school, right? I don't know if that matters to anyone. I'm just saying. That, so.
Which two offsites were you referring to? Which two offsites were you referring to?
The two, the one on December 18th and May 21st.
They both are slated for Grover Sea Fields.
I mean, I like that. It's a mile from my house.
Again, that's up to the board, but since you had two, we were trying to decide, and the year before, they did have multiple ones. They had one at Havelock, one at Grover, and one at West Craven. And it's great for the folks in that area, but it's not, like, when you have it at West Craven, if you're spotting, like, Havelock students, they don't tend to go, so a more neutral spot. But again, at the pleasure of the board, we'll be happy to change those. The accommodations sometimes are difficult as far as sound, but we can work that out.
Do you need more feedback on that?
Thank you for suggesting that. I do love it when we have our meetings in Havelock, but, I mean, that is true. A lot of people from West Craven aren't going to make the drive all the way out there. And when we have them in West Craven, a lot of people from Havelock aren't going to drive. So, Grover, as much as I hate to admit it, I love Grover, but it is centralized.
But a lot of people from West Craven aren't going to go to Grover either, because coming from the extreme edges of West Craven is difficult.
I would hope that if they're going to be given an award, then they might make the time either way to just come to Grover.
Well, that's why I was suggesting, even though it's state or national, what better honor than in front of your peers with your principal there of getting a state or national award is...
Okay. Any other feedback? Okay. Any? I mean, yes, Ms. Dacey?
So, I did have those two amendments that I'd like to get to. I don't know if this is the time, but I don't want us to miss those.
Yes.
So, first, with regard to the CTE proclamation, I know Ms. Kitzinger has it. I believe I would move that we go ahead and adopt that proclamation and recognize CTE month, and she can read it.
I think we can just go so move. I don't think we need to hear it.
I would like to hear it for CTE month proclamation.
Yeah, I'm ready to.
Oh, yeah, I thought, yes.
No? Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I heard a motion.
I did make a motion.
Did I hear a second?
To amend the, to go ahead with the CTE proclamation?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. We need to...
Now, it's part of discussion.
As part of discussion, I will go ahead and read the CTE proclamation.
Thank you.
By the Governor of the State of North Caroli, Carolina. Whereas all North Carolina students, whether they choose to pursue four-year college or not, should be able to get well-paying jobs that will support them and their families. And whereas career and technical education prepares students and young adults to succeed in academies and careers in both established and emerging industries. And whereas the mission of North Carolina's secondary career and technical education is to empower all students to be successful citizens, workers, and leaders in our global economy. And whereas career and technical education programs help students become the skilled workers that employers need to perform the jobs of today and tomorrow. And whereas career and technical education programs provide opportunities for students to acquire durable skills through schooling reinforced by career exploration and experiences in work-based learning. And whereas career and technical education programs in North Carolina provide education for all students in the areas of agriculture, business, finance, and marketing, career development, computer science, IT and technology, family consumer sciences, health sciences, trade and industrial education, among others. And whereas North Carolina career and technical student organizations, such as DECA, Future Business Leaders of America, Family Career and Community Leaders of America, the National FFA Organization, HOSA?
My lap.
Okay, yep. Future Health Professionals, Skills USA, and the Technology Student Association support the work of career and technical education programs to develop character, citizenship, leadership, and technical skills essential for students who are preparing for the workforce and further education. And whereas, along with North Carolina's career clusters and state-supported career pathways, career and technical education programs aid in our state's workforce development efforts. And whereas the strengthening career and technical education for the 21st Century Act demonstrates the crucial mission of these initiatives to enhance student readiness for successful careers and strengthen North Carolina's workforce. Now, therefore, I, Josh Stein, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Career and Technical Education Month in North Carolina, and commend its observance to all citizens.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we need a vote to adopt it. You have a first and a second. You ready for the roll?
I need a motion to adopt the...
Yep. Are you ready for roll call?
Roll call vote, please.
To adopt the CTE proclamation. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Proclamation accepted.
Thank you.
Proclamation accepted.
Thank you. And do I, um, have a motion to present the, um, a letter being presented from the board to Attorney General Jackson?
Right.
That Ms. Dacey would like to share.
Right, so I emailed that to the board last evening, and it is a letter that Wake County Public Schools is in the process of signing on to. Lee County, New Hanover, Granville, and Pender, um, are also working on it. So, um, it's already gone from, uh, New Hanover, and I think that's the reason that we saw the response from the Attorney General when we did, in which he agreed or had worked out, um, the identity theft coverage. So I would like the board to, um, sign on to this. I think it is important for there to be an investigation, and I anticipate there may be a multi-state, uh, litigation against Power School, and I think that's maybe an appropriate thing to do. So I think all we can do to encourage him to take legal action, um, we should do.
But on sixth February, Attorney General did say he was taking action to investigate it. So what are we signing on to other than, I would prefer we write our own letter saying thank you for taking this on, and we appreciate the efforts you're going, rather than just send another letter that he's acting upon.
Well, my response to that is that when you're actually working in a coordinated way to get a specific action from an elected official, it's oftentimes very helpful if you all have the same message. And the message is not just to investigate, but also to pursue legal action. That's what the subject line of the letter says.
Correct, but he, on sixth January, in his announcement, has said that he is doing all of that. So we're sending a letter.
He has not sued them. He has announced that he's investigating them. There is a very distinct difference between those two things.
In response to the New Hanover memo, is what he said.
Yes.
I, I think to Ms. Dacey's point, um, that if we want a message repeated, one of the most effective ways to do that with our legislation is so they don't even have to sort through that all these school boards are, um, in one accord, um, that it's just another pledge of support for the work. I agree that, um, Power School has taken what I think are appropriate measures to ensure the identity theft and the, um, the credit monitoring and such, it's forty-eight months' worth of it. Um, and I support in investigating. I, I am not a supporter of lawsuits, so, um, since we're not technically saying that in the letter, I, I think it also just sends a message, especially, um, again, I repeat, our school boards in twenty-twenty-four took, um, we took another step up in demonstrating a conservative voice to the state of North Carolina. And I think it's important that conservative school boards say, um, we have these shared interests, so.
I'm not disagreeing in letters being sent, I'm just saying we don't need to send the exact same letter, that we could write our own letter saying we're in agreement and we applaud the Attorney General for taking the actions that he's taking. I think that would be more supportive.
Correct me, I'm, my opinion is that we want him to support us, we don't want to support him.
Right, yes, thank you.
Is that a good way to say it?
I mean, you definitely, I share that sentiment for sure.
We write these letters, um, all the time, and I think one good example is, um, social media, the social media lawsuit that we have, um, the, the lawsuit that we've tacked on to. It's just, uh, the larger the number, the greater the impact, I think. So the quicker the.
And I'm not saying that we're, we're supporting him, I did use those words, however, I'm saying, I, I'm not in favor of just sending the same initial letter and saying, pretending it didn't exist, and pretending he hasn't stepped up to the plate to do anything. I'm just recommending we write our own letter stating, we acknowledge you have stepped it up to the plate, and we have the same concerns, but.
So time is of the essence with anything like this, because the whole reason we're doing it now is because we didn't meet until now. So the letter has, uh, you know, is to be signed by the board chair, so to the extent the board chair wants to edit the letter in any way she sees fit, that's perfectly acceptable. The, my point was to bring it to the attention of the board so that we could actually request the Attorney General do his job and support us in regards to Power School.
So do we have a motion that we would?
Yeah, sure. I would move that we, we, um, request the board chair to sign a letter to the Attorney General.
Do we have a, do we have a second? Any further discussion? Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
So again, just to repeat so everybody understands, um, using this as a template and that you will edit as necessary to send a unified voice, um, regarding the Power School incident. All right. Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs.
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger.
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason.
No.
Ms. Lori Spees.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I've been it now for board comments from the board members. Um, we can start with you, Ms. Davis, if you'd like. Okay, okay. Ms. Mason?
I had the opportunity to work in the cafeteria in New Bern High School. I have to say, um, Ms. Lauren is not in the cafeteria business, she's in the hospitality business, and it was very good. I had the opportunity to meet with the gunny in New Bern High for Rotsey, and he is excellent as well, and I was very impressed.
Ms. Dacey? So I did make it to the CTE Expo, which was phenomenal. Um, lots of our students there enjoying it. I was able to see, um, Ms. Kitzinger's son, who was, I, you know, totally embarrassed him, all you have to do is speak to a middle school boy, and they're embarrassed. So that was really fun. Um, saw my niece, who is in nursing school at the college, and, um, really neat machining demonstration, um, from folks at the community college, just lots of great things for our students to see and observe and participate in, so that was a great event. Um, and I really appreciate CTE doing that. Um, and then I, oh, I want to shout out to, uh, our staff, um, with regard to the professional development days, the summit last week, which was great. I felt like, um, we had some really neat speakers. I really particularly enjoyed meeting Mr. Union County, um, who was a phenomenal speaker. He is a, a young man with autism, and he spoke about engaging our autistic, uh, students and just is phenomenal, and I think has a great career in broadcasting and his future. So it was really exciting to meet him, so that's all I've got.
Ms. Gibbs?
I had the opportunity to assist with the Special Olympics this year. Pardon me if I get emotional. Um, I was a grandma that day. But the staff put a beautiful competition together. The children loved it. It was loud in a gym, and that caused some issues with our special children that, um, have issues with that, but, um, want to commend the staff for the Special Olympics.
Thank you. Ms. Kitzinger?
Um, last weekend, I guess it was, TSA went to TSA Technology Student Association from Tucker Creek, and I think there was a small group from Early College East, went to ECU in Greenville, and I'm not sure of, or ECE's, um, accomplishments, but from Tucker Creek, we had, one, two, anyway, several kids placed in gold and several got silver. Um, but this was for regionals, and it's a really good opportunity to, um, get some feedback on your projects before states, which are the first weekend of April, uh, we'll be going to that. And the fundraiser for that is Krispy Kreme doughnuts, so if anybody wants to buy a dozen, hit me up and let me know. Um, but other.
I would like to.
It was a lot of fun, it was a lot of walking. I think we walked like a total of five miles that day, my watch said. My shins were hurting, um, but the kids really had a good time, it was a lot of fun. That's all.
Ms. Davis, did you have anything, celebrations or comments or anything?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
And also, sorry, Ms. Guthrie has always done a really good job with TSA, um, and now she's at Early College East, but Ms. Thompson took her spot, and Ms. Mesa's really great as well, I love her, she's like the nicest human in the world. But Ms. Thompson has really stepped in and stepped up, and she's done a really wonderful job, and they're like the dream team, honestly. Um, and they've done a lot to help my kiddos succeed, and they do a lot to help all the kiddos succeed, but they are more than just teachers at Tucker Creek to me, they're like my friends and my family at this point. Um, so I just wanted to give them a shout out for being the incredible humans that they are.
And, um, I've had the opportunity in the last month to visit the three elementary schools in my district and District Three, so Oaks Road, Academy, JT Barber, and Trent Park Elementary, and, um, if you haven't been to the schools in your district, get to all of them. And I would just want to thank, um, Ms. Balkenberry, Dr. Everett, and Dr. Wallace, um, for not only welcoming me and, and in most cases letting me stay and hang out all day and see all the cool things that were going on. Um, and there is good stuff going on, and I, there's really good stuff going on at all three, so if those three principals are watching this, I'm not leaving your school out, but I have to say, at JT Barber, they are doing an attendance thing there that really took me back and took me back to my days of, they kind of have a sticker wall or, of, where they really acknowledge and kind of peer pressure students, peer pressure each other about attendance, and so I'm going to be really excited to see if that, um, attendance, um, increases the next time that we get an update for that. Um, the summit last week was great, I only was able to be out there that first day, but it was good, and, um, I loved the idea of our own folks, um, teaching each other. Most know I come from the forestry industry, and, um, I was super excited to see the Be Pro, Be Proud truck out there. Um, so, um, I appreciate that, and I appreciate any teachers who are listening to this, I appreciate all of you taking time, so many of you took time to go through that truck. Um, those careers are really important in Craven County, so thank you. Um, and then Read Across America's coming up, I think a lot of people know that, I'm excited. I will be at JT Barber on February twenty-eighth, they're doing, there's a few days ahead, um, but I would encourage any of the board members, um, check with elementary schools in your districts and, um, see if there's any fun Read Across America stuff that you can get involved with there.
I'll be at Crete, so.
So, yeah, good. Um, yes.
And this is board comments, but I, I think it's worth mentioning, because when, every time when I sit down, folks are texting me telling me everything I forgot to mention. So, um, I want to say a special thank you regarding the summit to the New Bern High School PTO. Um, some of the folks are here in the room that helped that day, they served the teachers and staff popcorn, and they also had, um, things to purchase. I thought it was a great idea, um, of Dr. Thomas's. He's, he's, um, started up again the PTO and getting parents sometimes involved in high school. Um, it's difficult, but because the kids want you to kind of leave them alone, so I commend him for that, and they were there, um, both days and got it to engage with staff, so I really appreciate the folks that took time out of their schedule to come and serve. Uh, we are also having, again this year, Tony Hoffman, um, that's part of our anti-drug type, um, campaign, and he will be here, I will send you the dates, Jennifer Wagner probably knows them off the top of her head, but.
March seventh.
March seventh, um, and that is with collaboration with, um, the county and other individuals who are passionate about, um, keeping kids off drugs, so he will be here to speak again this year. And just a little bit, tidbit of information, um, that Mr. Stacy Lee reminded me of, the funding model for ECU that is tiered, um, the request to implement that would cost two-hundred-and-twenty-nine million dollars. So while I would love to see that happen, you know, we need to continue to push for every dollar we can to meet all the needs of our students, but to do a tiered system, that's what they're looking at, um, and that's what they're pushing for, and, and Mo Green said that's what he's pushing for, but just so you know, that's, that's the dollar amount they're looking at. So wanted to leave those things with you today as, as we're concluding the meeting.
Thank you. Um, and thank you to this board for trusting me in a leadership role. Um, I've been a little back and forth today, next time I will be more on task and on schedule. So, um, I skipped over the chairman's report piece of this, um, I don't have much to report, but I would like to ask Ms. Mason if she has anything that she would like to share in the chairman's report portion of the agenda.
No, the chairman's report section was exactly what we did, where we used to have pluses and deltas and other things, and there was a request for new items. So the purpose of the chairman's report was to allow discussion between the board on topics that were not necessarily on the agenda, but we needed to promote, like, if we wanted to discuss budget priorities or something like that, we could have, add that to this section, that was the purpose of it.
Okay. And I, I didn't know if you had any updates or anything you wanted to, um, inform the board and the public on of any other public meetings that you've had with elected officials or anything, but.
No.
Okay, all right. Um, and, um, I, I do recall that, yes, Ms. Stacy?
Hi.
Oh, okay, no, I, I recall that from, we were never, we were not clear on whether or not we wanted to remove pluses and deltas from the agenda, and that there was a majority the time we took a vote to keep it on there, so, um, it won't take us much time, and I'm going to entertain any pluses or deltas, starting with Ms. Davis. Anything? Ms. Mason? I have nothing? Nothing, okay. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we're.
All in favor.
Oh, yeah, all in favor, raising of your right hand. You're adjourned.